This is our work session, Monday, August the 12th, 24, 3:30. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Burst?
Present.
Mr. Pope?
Present.
Mr. Lucas?
Here.
Mr. Hendricks?
Here.
Okay. Before we get started, I'm gonna ask Mr. Burst, he would lead us in a prayer.
Father, we thank the Lord for this day. Father, we pray God that you would just bless us, oh God, that we deliberate the business of this county. We pray God that you continue to bless this city and this county. Continue to bless our great nation, oh God. We pray God that you would just continue to watch over us, oh God, protect each and every one that's represented here today, oh God. And we pray God that you would just continue to bless each and every one of us. We thank you for your son, Jesus, dying for our sins. And we ask you, oh God, that you would just continue to be with us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a guest speaker, Mr. Judy Linganfelter.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Thrift and county commissioners, I'm Judy Linganfelter from the Bickley community in Northern Ware County. And I want to thank you in advance for allowing me to speak today. And special thanks to Sammy Hendricks and Barry Cox for assuring me that I could do this. And thanks to Steve Barnard, if he's listening, because this is my second time up here. I'm representing the Bickley community park that's located, if you look on the picture there, beside and behind the Bickley volunteer fire department. I've got some other community members seated behind me that are parents and grandparents of children in the Bickley community. Some others are coming, Karen Lee, Bobby Denton, Amy Ann Sanders. And some others are coming. But anyway, the Bickley community would like to, again, thank each of you for your support last year in making improvements to the park that we have in Bickley. And the residents there have been really enjoying the upgrades and additions last spring and summer. But last year, while the upgrades were being done at Bickley Park, our community worked on some upgrades and additions of our own. We raised funds and built a public use covered pavilion that you'll see pictured in your folder there to be used by groups and families. And it's been nice to be able to have birthday parties or sing or visit from Santa Claus there. But the community did the treated slab, the steel building, electricity, the plumbing, and paid for all of it. So between what the county has done for us last year and what the community has done for us, we've got a beautiful area. But there've been some other things donated by the community also that's enhanced it, some shade falls, some nets, things like that. But there's one thing lacking, and that one thing is shown on the cover picture there as proposed. And that is, originally, we discussed that we wanted a playground, and that has not been able to happen. So I'm now approaching you today to ask your support in getting a playground unit installed in our park and a swing set. It was drawn in on this proposal, but it's not happened. And honestly, our community donation line is exhausted. So we're asking for your help. We have a lot of families with young children in this area that could use some playground equipment while their parents are playing ball or having a meeting. I wanted to remind you the same thing I said the first time I came. The reason Bickley so desperately needs a playground is because of our location in the northern Ware County, the far northern. We don't have a school in Bickley that we can go to. They're busts some 35 miles to Wakoma or over to Ware'sboro. It's 25 or more miles to go to the Trembling Earth or any other public playground. We have a lot of children, like I said, in Bickley, and they travel a long way to school. But it would be nice to have a park to go to on Saturdays or, I don't even know if they get home in time to use it in the afternoon, but Saturdays and Sundays they would in summertime. Bickley's a good community with just about 100% property owning residents and taxpayers. And so we're just asking you to consider us in your dispersment of funds this year. A playground in Bickley would definitely be used and greatly appreciated. If you look forward in your folder there, it kind of shows what it looks like now. So I guess I will follow up my request, if I may, with some questions. There's a couple of problems going on there that need addressing. And I honestly don't know who I, who we are supposed to go to. If it's our county commissioner, or road department, or fire department, or recreation, I don't, I don't know who's over a park. So that's my request, and I guess my questions too. Can I answer anything?
I can see you need some landscape work done.
Yeah, they did a great job of leveling it all out, but we...
Yeah, at least some topsoil and some grass there.
I guess there's some grass and a couple of corners were washed, and so they desperately needed it.
Mr. Justin, you got any idea how much the equipment's gonna cost that y'all are wanting out there?
I should hear something.
Oh, some of the other ones?
I think I'm...
Couple of proposals.
If I did my math right, on it, it'd come at about like $98,000.
If you want both of them?
I didn't think it was that much.
Nah, well, I mean, if you add the total amount for all those pieces of equipment.
Oh, I'm just begging for one piece.
Okay, well, see, that's...
A swing set maybe.
Yeah, they, this is just one set of piece.
Okay, so I didn't, so you're not wanting all of them?
Well, I mean, if you want to.
Well, no.
I'm begging for one good piece and maybe one set of swings.
Okay, well, see, that's what...
Okay, good question then.
Yeah, because the way, I guess, I guess word may be presented, it's got all these different pieces, which I added them up. And, uh, but it didn't ever say, well, we just would like one of these pieces, you know?
We'd be quite happy with one good playground set and some swings.
Which one do y'all choose to prefer, be the one that would be interested in? I mean, you decided on one of them?
I don't know, they're all over the place. We were thinking something with at least a couple of slides, maybe a double slide and a single slide and things to climb on. And as far as the swings, we were just thinking of a completely separate set like we used to have at elementary school with like three or four swings on the A-frame. Just a, I say simple, but those things are about $3,000 now, just to get a four swing, four, six swing, swing set.
We used to get them for about $400.
And I, they have done...
We tried to get a used one, but it hadn't worked out.
No, we did have a used one, but Joe gave it away. We tore them from the old unison when they made their new building. And I thought we still had it in the back of the pecan orchard and was gonna give it to them. But, uh, he done give it away. So the other ones that was there went out to the Ware County Saddle Club, that and the playground. But I went out there and attended one of their community meetings. I think it was about the first week or second week I took this seat. And, and they've done a good job out there, great job y'all've done. And they hold meetings, and, and they have, you know, everybody's involved out there in that community. As far as donations, doing some work and stuff like that. But, uh, and we've done a great job, the county has, uh, doing the stuff out there. Um, there's some stuff that just wasn't quite finished, you know? Um, I actually, um, sent, did I send to you the playground set I found?
You did, you sent one, and that, and that one looked good.
Um, it was, it was pretty nice, big one now, to me. And it was somewhere around, Scott, you remember what that was, $4,300, $4,800?
I think it was about $4,300.
Well, I thought it might, would have been in this agenda right here, would he, so we could look at it, but, uh...
Yeah, I didn't run that one off. I had been looking, uh...
But it's a pretty nice one. It almost looks like this last one here for $30,000, pretty much. I mean, it's gonna have the two tiers right there and, and two different slides and like a barrel thing, I believe, if I remember correctly, on it. That would be a good option, I believe, um, on that end, you know? Um, and it's all metal structure too, you know? There's not no wood that's gonna deteriorate and rot. But we definitely need to get good quality stuff for, for it to last a year, if we're gonna get anything.
Yeah, I know a lot of the stuff now that are using these playground equipment, just like it, you know, the kindergarten area, the head start stuff, it's not, it's not steel. It's like a, got a coating, a plastic type coating on it.
That's right, that's right.
Right, yeah, make it, you know, not be so susceptible to the elements. And, uh, I know, just like I said, a lot of different companies, and that's why I wondered. I know this was just one company that you all checked with, right?
Right, that's just an internet company.
Scott, do you got that text I sent you, with that picture of that on there?
Was it a text or email?
I think it was a text I sent you. Could we maybe run a copy of it real quick, so we could all look at that one? I didn't have, I ain't got my phone here, I was running late, so I left it in the truck.
How much, Commissioner Sammy, how much you say that doubting was?
It was somewhere around, in the high $4,000.
$48?
Yeah, $48 something like that.
I think that was an email, I run it off.
It could have been an email.
And I, I think, you know, the people in Bickley, I know when they first came up here and, uh, we got a station out there, a volunteer station, and that's the only time I've been out there, when Steve I rode out there with him. And, uh, they've done a lot of positive things out there. And one thing I like, and I'll tell anybody this, is whenever you have some skin in the game too, it makes it a lot easier. Like I say, you all have put some, raised money to do certain things out there. But now, this would come up under, and I guess Scott could answer some maybe just, this would come up on our recreation department?
So is this, this is an established park area? I mean, is it, is it a designated park, or is this just public property in...
It's not public property. It's actually, the land that it's on was deeded to Ware County. So that we, well, the tennis court was already there, but it had fallen into disrepair. So we added, the Denton family donated the property and got it surveyed and gave it to the county.
That's right.
The county owns it.
Right, so my point being, it's now public property owned by Ware County. I remembered some history about that, I just wanna make sure that had occurred.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, it's, it's certainly, you know, up to you all as far as recreation wise, you know, where you have designated recreation areas in the county. And of course, you know, they're advocating for various reasons that this is a location that's away from other recreation areas in the county. And so if you all chose to, uh, you know, put money into, um, having a recreation area there, I think that would certainly be allowable.
Okay, that's what, just wanna make sure, because, like I said, I know they're out there and it's kind of off the beaten path, you know? It's away from, you know, the inner cities and all this kind of stuff. But if it's a park, by our standards, Ware County's standards, then it would be a public park.
That's correct.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that point.
Yeah.
And, uh, but I think it, I think, why about we, someone donated land for a walking track or something like that, right?
No, the county paid for that.
Okay, but, I mean, the land...
The land.
Oh, the land, yes.
Yeah, the land was donated.
The Denton family donated the land. Um, we had the survey and donated everything about getting that land into Ware County's name was all donated.
Okay, and tennis court, we did some upgrades on that tennis court also, right?
Uh, they, uh, they redid the surface and repainted it.
Okay, right.
Um, they left, left the same net, but it was okay. It was just the surface that needed redoing. But we also, um, in clear, cleared the land, and there were some trees and stuff there. We left two oak trees, thinking that would be some nice shade on the backside of the track. But I guess the track must have not agreed with one of them, and it has died. I've got a picture of it in there where it's, it keeps shedding limbs and it's going to completely fall soon. And the Dentons have given permission that if somebody would take it down, they can just kind of shove it in the woods, unless they want the oak wood.
Okay, so right now, I think, based on what's taking place out there now, we spent what, roughly around about $40,000, $5,000, the county has, to try to get that up?
I don't have those figures in front of me, though.
Yeah, based on what I have here, yeah.
There's been a good bit.
Right.
And it, and it looks really nice. But we're just begging for a playground set to go right in the middle of that track and all that open area that's there.
And I think that's commendable, Commissioner Sammy, you know, took the initiative to try to, I guess, find what it was. Is it like, not a swing set, but something that...
Um, I would say it might have two swings on it too.
Okay.
Um, but I, I do believe we, it would be, they got enough area we could put a swing set if everybody agrees upon it. You know, that way, four, five kids could be swinging at one time instead of just two, you know?
We have priced them in two or three places, and it'll be about $3,000.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I see this, uh, and that's about what I looked at too. They, they run from anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000.
Now, is that, that's not including putting it up, right? I mean, that's something that...
That's right, we would probably, I talked to Scott, but he's gone right now, but we was, we, he was thinking about maybe having some maintenance, you know? We get a downtime, we go, go install it, you know, whatever. Um, or I'm sure that this company installs too, you know? This company or...
Maybe if we had to do that and they install it, look at what they would charge to install it. Versus if we had to have our forces out there, because, you know, that's, like I said, it's kind of off the beaten path. And the time, we got to figure the time it's gonna take them to do it, it may be better to just have that company.
It would definitely probably cost us a little more money for, for the company to have an installer come. Uh, but like far as time, and I know our maintenance crews are, are pretty slammed. Um, they probably slammed and slammed, so, um, you know, that'd be something we could sure address too.
I'm not a builder, but I would think a swing set would be a lot easier to put up than playground equipment. That's the one I would be concerned about, who would put it together or if that comes with the price.
We tore, we took that one down at the old unison place, and, and my guys, and, so I had me and three other guys put it back up roughly two days at the Ware County Saddle Club. And I was pouring concrete around the poles, you know, doing it like, as good as we can do it, you know what I'm saying?
That was a swing set?
Yeah, that was a whole playground set, kind of like, um, probably most of the, like this second one right here, that treasure hunt one, that's about the size and all that it was.
Second one on you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because if you don't put in concrete, good wind will push it right on over.
Yeah, and you got to have all your poles set just right. And we was kind of, we, we kind of just left the holes open without the concrete first. That way, we got all our pieces to fit up and level, and then put the concrete there. That way, we still have some adjustment to go. But it wasn't that bad, it wasn't that fun, but it wasn't that bad.
Yeah.
And then the, oh, swing set, it was just a matter of putting it in place, and because it was already assembled, you know?
Right.
And we just put it in place and then took post hole diggers around all the legs. And just as we dug, it just went down to where we wanted it and then cemented it like that. I actually, like I told Ms. Linganfelter in, at the community thing, I'll donate the sand if they wanna just do sand in the playground area. I'll donate that through Sammy Seppert Service and spread it for them. Um, you know, now if they wanna go with some chips or rubber chips or something like that, then that's a little different story. But far as just regular river sand, they can spray some Roundup on it, keep the weeds killed, you know? I'll do that on, through Sammy Seppert.
I don't know about which would be best, but I can tell you how bad it is to take grandchildren up there now when it's raining and all that clay.
Yep.
Need some topsoil all in there.
It's a mess.
Landscape.
So we need something other than clay.
I would, I would say some topsoil around the edges, that way we'd get some good grass growing. But that whole inside really is gonna be a playground area, so if you spread five, six inches of that sand over the top of it, it should be pretty good with that, on top of that clay.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have anything to do with this.
And you walk through what you're talking about, which one is it?
I mean, what now?
Which one is, I mean?
You're talking about this one, the whole thing?
Yeah, this is, that whole, that, that'll be the whole, that'll be the whole thing. That's exactly what it looks like right there.
All right, the picture on that page is-
That page is- Yes, ma'am, the front page too, it's just kinda wide and dialed up there up front. But, that would, that would be-
So it has two slides, and it has the crossover thing.
Mm-hmm. And over here, it's got two swings, and then it's got a set of, of monkey bars off to the side, if you'll look at the front page, looks like it's got a set of monkey bars, and then maybe a little, maybe a-
Well, this is an awful lot cheaper than the prices that-
It is, and it looks, it looks good to me, I mean, um-
It's also got a rock wall on it.
Yep, it's got rock walls, it's got where they can get up under it, um, you know, two towers, cross bridge.
I would like to find out, you know, again, uh, from the company, what, what they charge to install that, I mean, cause I mean, if they, in this business, they probably know the most efficient way and, you know, cost efficient way to get it put up for them. If you know where-
Probably, a- and we can, we can contact them and see if they offer installation, you know, um, I could just hire a contractor around here, you know, uh, to install it, too. I would think that this company right here offered installs, because it's gonna be more of your commercial, commercial type industrial, you know, like you'll have. I would think that this would be good enough sufficient for a school right here, the way it looks to me, but these right here, I believe, are you know, your top line, this is, this is, this is your, this is your top of the line stuff right here. Not saying that there's gonna be anything wrong with this, but these are gonna be, uh, be, um, more like what a school or something like that would probably get.
And the, the ones that I sent in, they were like, American made.
Yes, ma'am.
A company out of Florida deals with, and it was American made stuff that guaranteed to hold up for a long time, but that's a lot more expensive, I don't, I don't know about this company.
Yeah, and these companies out of Spring, Texas, looks like, or no champion of spring purchase that, um, don't really know where this company's out of, and couldn't, couldn't, if I had to bet on it, it's probably not made in the USA, this stuff, cause anybody, ain't nothing else is.
Well, it says across the top right, it says that.
So what do you think, since that's in your district, Sammy, if we could, uh, find out cost of it?
Installation.
What the installation would be, and then get back with these people?
Yes, we sure can.
Yeah, need to check on it, make sure it's stout enough and-
Well, it says, it says right here fourteen people can be on it at one time.
Yeah. And if they need someone to try to just kinda keep it spruce up right now, I would recommend Bobby Denton, I think he would do, he retired from the railroad. And I had, he would need something to do. I worked with him for thirty-five years, I guess, out there, so, I'd give, give him something to do.
He's absolutely good help, he helped me out yesterday on a water day at church.
Yeah.
Ran around there with the water hoses and stuff.
Yeah, and then he can pull a lord out there with him too, you know, so I know all both of them.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate your time and your consideration, if there's any research that I can do, let me know, I'll, I'll be-
I'll follow up on the-
I know the prices are all over the place, so I'm at, I'm at your discretion on that, I'm just, we're just begging for something.
I feel like we need to-
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Lingefelder.
Thank you, Mr. Lingefelder.
Appreciate what you're doing out there in that community too.
I feel like we need to do something on that landscaping too, because
Yeah.
what, we've already got money out there, and if we don't correct some of that, and just, that's gonna be nice, right?
Breaking off. And I guess, I don't know, Sammy or Scott, whoever, but when checking on the installation for this assembly, if, like I said, it may be someone local that does that, you know, that-
I'm sure that we could get a contractor to put it together if, you know, they don't offer installation.
Right.
Okay.
We could probably get some of our guys, if it's all right with Scott, to go out there and put this stuff up, but I don't know what that stuff, Mr. Burford knows, that house his son built right down there, uh, they went out there and sprayed that stuff on the ground, and three days later, grass was growing.
Hydracene.
Hydracene. I mean, that was the neatest thing I've ever seen, they went out there and sprayed it, and three or four days, you got grass growing.
Yeah, I'd say we definitely need to get some topsoil around on the inside of the track and around the edges, and probably hydroseed.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Any more on it? Oh, good.
Excuse me, but what about the, uh, the tree holders, are invited to the county, do you think people would give them that, or who can do the contact?
I think I can, I think I can get somebody to go cut it down and push it off in the woods.
I don't want it fall on the track.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take care of that for y'all.
Okay. Okay. I wanna do it, then just carry it over and-
Yeah, we'll, on the-
Table it till we get-
We'll find out the details, I'll try to find out the next couple of days on the installations.
Table it for, till next month, and we can find out, and put it all together, we can get somebody to landscape it, and get your playground.
Yeah, and I can, I'll let y'all know, so you know what it's gonna cost, yes.
And then, check this equipment out, make sure it's stable enough.
I think we could probably check all that out within the next couple of days, you know? You know, if we can all get it together, maybe before next month to get it all rolling.
Okay. All right, we'll look into it, Ms. Lingefelder, to see if we can, I think we can maybe help. Okay? Let's go on to the agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, um, we've got Jason Rubinbauer here from the, uh, WWDA, he wanted to speak to y'all about an issue on a letter I put out in front of you, about having some things done to a part.
The dust report.
Jason, will you come up? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, as you're aware, we've got some issues with a couple of our industries in the industrial park, having some problems with people speeding on Fulford Road, and then the issue at the intersection of Fulford Road and Industrial Boulevard, where they've had in the last, uh, five years, they've had six accidents, that was five, when I was sending emails, and it didn't happen. Uh, of those, two or three of those have had injuries, that's not a lot of accidents in that period of time, but I've been told by the industries and their employees, there's been a lot of near misses. And so the request is to make the Industrial Boulevard and Fulford Road a four-way stop. Slow the speed down to thirty-five miles an hour like it is throughout the rest of the industrial park, and then repaint the crosswalks in, in front of Carolina Skiff, because their employees are having technical and stock across that road and have to walk across that road quite a bit. So just for, to enhance the public safety in our industrial park.
Okay. The speed limit, what do you want the speed limit?
Thirty-nine.
Well, the, all of the rest of the industrial park is thirty-five miles an hour, but of course, if, if the commission wants to change the speed ordinance to twenty-five or something like that, because of the railroad tracks and everything right there too, I don't think we'd be opposed to it.
Now, are there caution lights at the walk, the walkway where they walk?
So Carolina Skiff has installed those caution lights on their own.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't think, but maybe one is working right now, so.
And I know that though, even out of live oak homes, I've probably live oak does it maybe the most, they'll bring a, a house out onto the road, and then back in that little lay down yard too. You know, um, that's a lot of, a lot of employees that work right there, and, and is up by the roads on break time and stuff like that too.
Every morning Clayton Homes brings all of their loads because of that swing they have to make. They come out of the Clayton lot, come down to that intersection, and have to make that right-hand turn to get out on the one-four-twenty-three.
Yep, instead of going right out by Simmons.
Right, because trying to make that right-hand swing and backhand make that swing.
Out of their drive and backhand make that swing.
I, I definitely, and I, again, appreciate, you know, you bringing this to our attention, uh, Jason, and that's a work area out there, so it's not like, you know, it's a public highway or anything, but it's really, you know, almost like private roads out there. And I think that anything we can do to kind of facilitate making it safer for the employees, and also have what a motor and public can still go through there, but we don't need anybody just flying through there with people working and crossing and walking across there, so, and this would be a real inexpensive fix right here. But it would pay great dividends as far as accidents and, you know, things of that nature.
Only question I got is, I know at one time, both of those lights used to work, you know, and it definitely was an eye catcher, especially at dusk and at nighttime. But, uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Mr. County Manager, since Carolina Skiff is the one that actually bought them and put them in and paid for it, could we fix those, or is that private property? I mean, it's on our right of way.
My understanding, the reason they bought them was they were told from the past, I think before this commission, that, uh, the county wasn't willing to do anything at that time. And so they just took it upon themselves to try to protect their employees. Uh, you know, how long ago that was, I don't have that information.
Could we?
I wouldn't like to, to consider too, if we do make that a four-way stop in Industrial Boulevard and Fulford Road, to have the flashing red lights on top of those signs.
On both roads as well.
Yeah, and, probably they got them not solar, so it's not, don't have to worry about running power out there and anything like that.
Right.
No.
I think that's feasible, but, Ms. Jennifer, could we do that if?
I think that's, you know, that's their personal property on our right of ways, so my suggestion would be coordinate with them and see if, I mean, and, you know, technically, they don't technically have the right to put it on our right of way, although certainly, I think it's something we wanna see, we, I mean, we want everybody to be safe, and so uh, maybe we can coordinate with them to see if, you know, we can get that fixed and, and use it as a, um, along with these other steps we're gonna take also.
Okay.
I think everybody would be very appreciative, so, and anything I can do to help y'all, just look it up.
All right. It wouldn't hurt to put them, paint those stops on the highway there, and those signs to get people used to it, because brand new, they ain't wanna see it, just sticking signs out there, we need to
Yep.
do the, uh, paint the lines and all too.
Okay. And I'd say if you cut it down to twenty-five mile an hour too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And once, you know, twenty-five or thirty-five. I mean, the jailhouse ain't far, so they, they sit out there, a couple hours in the morning, and maybe at the knocking off time, you know?
Or at lunchtime too.
I don't-
Yeah, but it says thirty-five, from forty-five down to thirty-five.
You need to research before you try to go down to twenty-five.
It's forty-five now.
Yeah, but he wants to cut it to thirty-five.
Well, I think we should go on to twenty-five, if I said. It's not of them. It, it ain't, I mean, this, you know, it, it runs right in between all them buildings.
You need to do some research before you try to go down to twenty-five, because I think there's laws in state that says that there's certain areas you can't go above thirty-five, like residential, get out of twenty-five, or something, you can't go above thirty-five, so you just gotta check.
Okay.
I think it's thirty-five.
So we, we do just go down to the lowest speed we can and stay within the law.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think they're wrong on that, but I, I favor some laws on that.
Yeah, long as it stays within the law.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you for bringing it. Let's go to the, uh, the bid award for physical year twenty twenty-four DOT L-MIG roadway improvement.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this was the, the item that was tabled from the last meeting, June, uh, July twenty-second. And, uh, I've got an update provided by East Coast, um, the apparent low bidder, so, um, I just brought it back to see if y'all wanted to move forward with that bid.
Okay, have they done everything they supposed to do now?
Well, by the day, they're supposed to finish up the striping, they have the striping left, which they think they'll have it done by today. Um, and then the, uh, change order for Astoria Road, they would have to start on it, it's not, it's not been done yet, but they would have to get it complete too.
I don't know if he ever got a signed contract, did he?
He did, he did, I had to go back and verify, and it was approved, and we, we, I got it sent to him, he sent it to me, and I, I signed it and sent it right back.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, how, this, Mary Scott, how, how long they figure it's gonna take on that Astoria Road?
Well, I ask, and, um, I haven't heard back yet, they told me just a few days, but I haven't heard it from a definite estimate.
It shouldn't take long, I think.
Mr. County Manager, did they get, whenever that bid order was changed, did they get extra days added to the
No.
contract?
No, sir.
They mean, they added, they added a complete road to, to repay, but didn't get no extra days in the original contract?
Not that I'm aware of, there would have been a, a, a change of it too, but I don't know of one that was granted.
Why didn't they give them extra days to do it?
Well, they would typically for that, um, and that would be something if you all would want to, to add extra days, which, you know, I can see why. That way they could finish up Astoria.
I think it's just feasible to, especially with the rain we've been having, and, you know, the hurricane just come through, it'd be feasible to add extra days. Give a company, especially when you're gonna do a change bid order and add another road to it, how long is that road? About a mile?
It's a little over half a mile, I believe.
About a half a mile.
I think it's about three quarters of a mile.
Yeah. So, what you're saying is, do we need to get them a, some extra days in view of this change order for Astoria Road?
Cause I mean, they added the road, but didn't give them days on the, to finish their work.
But we, they hadn't actually started on that change order work though.
Well, they hadn't started on it yet.
No.
Okay.
But, um, I tell you what, they- And I'll tell you, a big thing that, that hurt them right off the get-go was, um, uh, Littlefield selling out, Soul Seaman. I was only, not only was one who done Soul Seaman around here, and that's who done all the East Coast too, so that was one of the factors that kinda slowed them up too, um.
Well, I tell you, they, and like I say, I, I, I can understand that, but they went way over a hundred and sixty-eight days.
What they were, what, seventy-eight days after, what, last, when the bids went out for the new project?
Uh-
Something like that, seventy, sixty-eight days, seventy-eight days?
Seventy-eight or seventy-nine.
Okay, any more on days?
Look at, they have some long days for sure.
Any more discussion on? Okay, let's carry on. All right, B, project list for the physical year twenty twenty-five, local maintenance and improvement grant, L-MIG. This is on B.
Yeah, this is the, uh, new application, the new, uh, L-MIG application, uh, I was bringing it back to see if any others, um, any commissioners have any ideas on, on the projects to submit. We have to have, um, we have to have the, the contract they're working on, um, East Coast would be working on finished before we submit this application, but I'm gonna need some time to calculate the distances and, and the costs and those kinda things, cause we gotta fill out an application with it. And that's why I went ahead and put it down here again. Uh, there's attachment, the chairman mentioned, uh, two roads to, to pave, one is Gibbs Lane, and the other one's Thigpen Road. And I've got it on the back sheet with, uh, estimate that was done about a year and a half ago.
We, we need to pave some roads if we can, and, uh, our Gibbs Lane is a real busy little short road. Got school buses, and everything goes across from Fomp Road back to, and it's real shortcut for and, uh, all, all people lives up down Fomp Road has to go through there, going over to grammar school.
And how long is that Gibbs Road?
Gibbs, it's not, but about two hundred feet, isn't it?
Two point one?
No, that's Thigpen.
No, that's Thigpen.
Gibbs Lane.
Gibbs Lane ain't but about, uh, probably half a mile.
Roughly about a half a mile.
Are you having on this list you gave us?
It's on that, I don't-
It's on the top of that list.
Oh, I see, yeah, 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 I'm sure.
Gibbs Lane.
Now, that Thigpen Road, I know is,
It's-
that thing stays about underwater every time you
Yeah.
it rains a little bit, cause I lived down there a lot.
We have a lot of complaints on that Thigpen Road all the time, and the bridge is already built, and, and I've asked Scott if he would to check into that, that, that bridge, that we built the cement bridge there, the county did, to pave that road, and it's been shoved back.
So this Thigpen Road, that's the one that's almost two miles long?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, it connects, it would connect Pineview Truck Road to Lovett Road.
Lovett Road.
Okay, but now that's one of the road that was just kind of added in at the end, right? I mean.
Well, it's been on the list a long time, but it's on the regional, but we talking about ten or twelve years down the road. We won't bring these things up, what we talked about doing this kind of, and then we could take them, the regional money, if it's approved, and we get it, we can move it on some of those other roads.
Okay, so right now, we're talking about this, the Griffin Road, which would be, what, like one point two miles?
Thigpen.
Okay, thick, well, you had Griffin Road also, right?
The Gibbs, that's not in there.
That's, that's over on the, they, they already.
There's only two roads on here.
This, just two roads on this, this is for that new L-MIG money.
So this would take up all the L-MIG money?
Yeah, yeah, it'll probably take that, and we got a estimate here of two point six, but that's just an estimate.
And what, what do we have on the L-MIG?
Uh, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
One point five, one point six, one point.
Three point two million, one nineteen.
One point one nineteen, five thirty-five.
Yeah.
So that's, that's not gonna cut it for those, that, uh, what, Thigpen Road?
Or we don't know what it's gonna come in at. These are just estimates.
Now, this is talking about completely paving it, right?
Right.
And what, right now, I mean, I know it's not set in stone, but we figure about, almost like about a million dollars a mile, or just a little million dollars a mile for paving?
Yeah, it's pretty much. Scott, which list did, uh, Commissioner Marner have Thigpen Road on, because it's one that's already been scheduled to do? Which one?
I believe it's regional, the regional T-Slot.
The regional T-Slot one.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not voting for this, there's too many roads that need maintained, and if it's all our money, minus money going to two roads, I'm not voting for it.
And so it's already, Thigpen Road is already in the regional?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
All the money on this, too.
Which other one?
The IFA do this in the regional, just that, they all been listed.
Sales tax collection is coming in, this L-MIG should be put on maintenance, like it's, like it's always happened. So there's other money coming to build new roads. That's me.
So other than Thigpen Road, which other road we have slated for this, uh, L-MIG money?
Um, that's it, that was just one that the chairman brought up, and I put it on there.
These roads right here need paving, bad.
Talking about the, uh?
Thigpen and the Gibbs Lane, and they need moving up, instead of pushing back all the time.
Well, would we, would we, would we really be pushing it back if we, I mean, it's already on the regional, right? Gibbs Lane, I mean, uh, Thigpen.
If the regional approves them, we don't know that they're gonna approve them.
Okay, but we also have monies.
That list has already been generated, it's all.
And we also have money, correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Manager, that, on the Splot Tax, once we get the money for the overpass, that we had to put that aside.
Right.
Then we're gonna have monies in there to, to, I think, like eighteen million or something like that, that we can use for?
Uh, yes, sir, when it's all said and done, that.
Paving and stuff like that, so we wouldn't even have to wait on the regional, if we, once we start getting the money, then we could put, do it that way. But right now, we don't have just a limited amount, this L-MIG, which is what, one point two?
One point, one point one, really.
And it won't, it really won't even pave that road all the way.
It's subject to pay both of them, if you want it's bid. These are estimates, they're just estimates.
But what I'm saying.
I see them come way under.
Why don't we just send it out, get an estimate on it?
Yeah, bid it out.
Bid it out.
Well, I tell you what, if it's, if the pass is any indicator of what it's gonna cost, a million dollars, just about, that's what it's gonna take to pave one mile, and we talking about two point one miles, even, so.
We could, I could get, um, the only way you're gonna really know what it's gonna, by the estimate it's gonna be is watch, really what you got here, but, um, you know, I can touch base with the engineering company and find out what it's usually running, you know, per mile to do it, and that's kind of the estimate you use, without fully, by fully designing the project.
That's right. And if you turn out a bid, you got to fully design it, and then you say, well, we just wanted to see what it cost. Ain't gonna like that too much.
Like I said, we just got a limited amount, and, uh, and we do have, like I said, Thigpen Road, almost what, two miles, and then if we do that one, then you don't have any money left to do any of these other smaller roads, and we also got the money that we're gonna have from the Splot Tax, because it's coming in real good, and I figure in the next, what, six, eight months, we'll be able to take money then and start appropriating, uh, paving some of these other roads, with Scott.
Scott, based on projections you've been giving us, when should the, what, the twelve million dollars be saved up for the overpass?
Uh, I think there's about eight point two in there now, so you probably got about three more months, roughly.
You always said.
About three, about three months.
Not in here.
Not quite three months, because that third month's probably gonna have, be more than what we're supposed to collect, so.
That will free up what was coming in to do another part.
Yeah, then that's when we start splitting.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, if not on that, we could use some of this L-MIG for some resurfacing.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we could do a whole lot more on some of the resurfacing, and then we still, like I said, keep this in mind about the Thigpen, but when we start, when we kind of unhinged from the amount of money we got for that overpass, which is twelve million, once we get past that, then we can start doing it like we need to as far as paving and stuff, then, but right now, we, our hands are kind of tied, because that was what was put before the border, and I think we need to comply with what we said, is we're gonna raise this twelve million dollars first earmark it for the overpass, then we take this other monies and start doing paving and stuff like that. And thank God it's been coming in real good, the, uh, Splot, the money's coming in from the Splot.
We can actually move that resurfacing money to dirt roads. Scott says we can do it. And some of these dirt roads needs paving worse than we need some of these, you know, overlays. It'll do more people good.
Yep, and we are.
They've been, they've been running up down these dirt roads, and we don't seem to never think about them, all we wanna do is overlay something else.
I think about them, and that's why I'm saying that.
And they've been out there, somebody said, they did, they, they, they took, made their choice to live out there. I was born out there, seventy-seven years ago, some of them.
Well, that very well may be.
I don't know, I made the choice or not.
That they chose to move their butt, that's still, not to dare, that, not to negate the fight, the hate, they still would like to have a paved road.
Yeah. But anyway. Okay. Any more on them? Not scared of. Okay. They see memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Forestry Commission. Now. See.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, what you have before you is a MOU with Ware County and Georgia Forestry. Uh, you'll look on the back page, uh, next to the back page, you'll see the equipment that Georgia Forestry has inside our community, which is the tractors, which has their personnel listed beside them, Mr. Banks, Mr. Thrift, Ben, Mr. Murray, Mr. Germs. What you see at the bottom of that list is nine pieces of equipment that we are currently using of Georgia Foresters, and this is just a MOU saying that we can still use their equipment, it's nothing, we, we have had twenty-seven pieces of equipment on that list, and we got it all moved away, except just these nine pieces of equipment. So this is just a MOU between us and Georgia Forester, saying that we could use their equipment and that we, that we have.
This is really an extension of what's been done for the past thirty years.
Yes, yes, this is nothing new, this is just.
Bookwork and anything else.
Yes, change it up.
Yes, and what we've done, we took the older stuff off, and this is just what lies on the newest, so we just updated the MOU with the nine pieces instead of twenty-seven pieces that we have.
So that old equipment, Chief, is something that went back to the?
We sent it back to Georgia Forester.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you, Dean.
Let me, let me ask you a question real quick.
You got a question?
Our SARs equipment, are they still housed in the city, or we got them back yet?
The G-SAR?
G-SAR, yeah.
Is still in the city.
Do we have MOUs on them being in the city?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no, sir. That was with the Public Safety Director that was here, and that's retired man, but I don't have a MOU with G-SAR stuff.
Mr. County Manager, is something we can do about that, because, you know, coming from my background, what, actually my wife, and I've spoken to her about the insurance part of those vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
Not saying anything's gonna happen to a city building, but if our, if our equipment is in a city building, and that roof collapsed on our piece of equipment, their, their insurance will not cover our equipment.
The state owns that equipment, Ware County doesn't own it.
Ware County or the state signed that equipment over to Ware County.
Right.
We, we, we run insurance.
The manager of all our equipment.
We, we pay the insur, the taxpayers pays the insurance on that equipment, they pay the upkeep on that equipment, that's Ware County equipment allotted from the state and needs to be in a Ware County building, does not need to be in a city building.
The G-SAR is combined city, county, and other counties.
Then why are both of our equipments in both city buildings and not one in the city and one in the county? That's my biggest question. If we're combined, and we both got units, then need to split them. Both of those pieces of equipment that we're responsible for, that these taxpayers pay for, need to be in county builds, not city builds.
Well, what happened, the state never heard from the Ware County Fire Department about being part of G-SAR, and they were fixing to take all the equipment back to Atlanta. So Scott got all that straightened out.
Let me, I, before you say that there, let me correct you on that one.
Sorry.
They did hear from us. I did talk to the state, I, then I was talking to a gentleman by the name of Mr. Harland Provost, that was with GMA. They did hear from us, so there was never a lack of communication between them, because if we go back and date G-SAR back, G-SAR had had some grants that we were fixing to lose, and when we set up, we finished out the grants, so we could get the grants, complete the grants and buy equipment with the grants. So we finished out buying the equipment with the grants, then the G-SAR was moved away from us and given back to the Georgia, uh, the training center, and then the training center moved it out there, but the fact that them not getting in touch with us is a false statement.
Because that, I mean, that, when the new director came in, that was the word that Scott got.
Well, I maintain contact with Harland Provost, and so I know the fact that there was no lack of communication between us and them. So when the prior chairman was here, Chief Brown was here.
Right.
That's when there was to be some money lost from that, that we went back in and made sure that we did not lose, and we did not lose the money. We were able to buy the equipment that was needed, that was already applied for on the grant. But the G-SAR equipment was within the county, and then it went to the Georgia, to, I think, Center, Georgia Public Training Center, but the training center, and then that's when it was gone, but to say that we didn't, that's not true, because I did make contact with them.
There's some miscommunication from Atlanta then, so.
But I did make contact with them, because I wanted to make sure we didn't lose the money for the grants.
I remember that, that's good.
And we did do that.
Michael, my question is, who insures those vehicles?
We have it on our policy.
We have it on our policy. Who tags those vehicles?
We do.
I, I want those vehicles in Ware County buildings, not in the City of Wacross. Those are our vehicles, we pay for them, we insure them, they're our equipment. We're gonna run into something bad if we don't.
Mr. Chairman, it's from me.
Yeah.
Get, get, kind of spank, I'm kind of a little mixed up here. The G-SAR, what's the equipment that is?
There's a, there's a, a truck.
These trucks here.
And it's a, a truck and a trailer, uh, enclosed trailer, and they have, uh, equipment such as, uh, repellent equipment, they have, uh, collapse, uh, collapse equipment on there, building collapse equipment. There's, uh, rope on there, there's some saws on there. There are various pieces of equipment that was specifically bought for that, that had to be, when it was, the grant applied for it, was specific stuff that had to be bought, which was the saw, which was the truck, which was the enclosed trailer, which was the, uh, repellent stuff, all of that was bought in that grant, that was with G-SAR. And so all of that equipment is inside that stuff, and I don't wanna, it's, it's a trailer full and full of stuff. Got batteries, got saws, got all kinds of equipment on it. So I don't wanna just quote you a lot of stuff and not know exactly, but it's full trailer of the equipment.
All rescue equipment.
Yes, a rescue.
When the state calls for a rescue team.
So has it ever been housed in?
It was housed at Ware County.
Okay, so why did they go to, to the city?
When the safety director that retired, he, when he become the safety director, he got back G-SAR, and he and I guess the city worked out a place to put the city, that equipment inside the city.
So it's shared by the city and the county?
It's, it's, uh, county is the one that's responsible for the grant that's on that equipment, but there is members from Ware County and the City of Wacross that's on G-SAR. And there's actually some more counties that has members that's a part of G-SAR as well. But the equipment is, was in Ware County, but now it's at the City of Ware.
Half of the equipment is stored in Ware County at the old, um, helicopter hire. Sorry.
So what you're saying, Commissioner Locas, is that if it's the county, I guess, equipment, then it shouldn't be in the city building?
Exactly.
Even though it's a shared?
Well, how, how is it shared when both of our trucks are in city buildings? If it was shared, if we need one, correct me if I'm wrong here, Chief, but if we need one of those G-SARs vehicles out in Millwood or Beckley or wherever, they would have to.
Yeah, I don't have a key to go get in the vehicle and get it.
See, that's not right, we don't have keys to our own vehicles that we're paying for.
So what if?
But I could call, and, and, we could call, but it's not, it is, it's a little bit more of a process.
So what, what, and I guess I'm just trying to see a simple solution, if the city just gonna give you, whoever, keys to that building?
They got keys.
Is the city on the grant?
No.
They, they didn't share on the grant, you said they didn't, and they wasn't in on the grant?
The grant.
The grant was our grant, it was just for the county.
Yes, sir. They just have team members on the, on the team, the G-SAR team.
So it's a shared responsibility, you have team members from both city and county.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have an issue or a problem when you got two pieces of equipment, but having both of our pieces of equipment in both city fire departments, I don't like that.
So.
It's not all in the city, parts in the county, parts in the city.
What parts in the county?
I, a truck and trailer and, and.
Do we have a truck and a trailer in the county?
I have, I don't know where it's at if it's in the county, because I'm not, I, I couldn't tell you. Now, I know there was some in the city, but as far as when the director out there was making arrangements for all of that, I never knew where any of the equipment went.
Mr. Scott?
Preved that conversation.
We find out this week where that, Ware County's truck and Ware County's trailers, two each, are located. And if we have both of them in city buildings.
Yeah.
It's my request as a commissioner, and if we're gonna take it to a vote, we'll take it to a vote, but I want our equipment in our building.
Do we have a place to put it, Jake?
What?
We can, I'll look and see, because I don't.
I know we're limited on space, because we were having to clean out.
I would have to look and see.
I'm playing that, because that, my next question is, do we even have a place to put it, and if we do, or can we get a key to where it's at now, to where if we need to go, we go get it?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll say, I'll, to go back to where some of the equipment was gonna be put, a while, years ago, there was gonna be a storage building built behind Station One, that county fire station, that was going to store equipment, stuff that was outside in the weather, inside. And this was part of the equipment that was gonna be put inside, that was sitting outside. When we never received that building that was gonna be put back there, we never had, we had it put in the air, the hangar, the air evac hangar. we'd never had, we had it put in the air, the hangar, the air evac hangar that was there. And now the air evac has come back, they've taken that spot up where the equipment was at. So where we used to, when air evac wasn't here, we had used to store stuff in that closed building.
Right.
Now that they're back, we don't have that space. But it was gonna, there was gonna be a building put behind Station One that we were gonna put not just this equipment, but a lot of the equipment in, out there.
Mr. Chairman, if you, I don't know if you called or not, but even at our retreat, I brought up about us constructing a building back there so we would have adequate storage space for, such as this right here. But if we don't have a place to even put the stuff right now.
And I can get with the manager and we'll look and see where we could put the stuff out to. But I'll, I'll get with the manager and we'll, we'll see what space we have available and what equipment so we'll know.
So has it been any problem? I mean, I don't.
We had to use them, so that's a good thing. We haven't had to go get the equipment.
Okay.
Uh, so we haven't had to use any of the equipment, which is a good thing. Uh, but now last, last year, not this year, but last year when the hurricane came through, they used the saws unit on there and we didn't use, we didn't have a saw team from them. They was using our equipment inside the city, which is great, it was being used, but we never, we never used it. In the meantime, we've got saws and we, we got our own saw team now.
But we've had to take our money from the county and go buy more equipment that we had got a grant that had already paid for, that was already our equipment, that the city was using. That's what I don't like, Scott.
So why couldn't we use the equipment that was, that was the grant?
They were using it at that time.
They were using it.
They were.
And that's why we had to go buy more saws, because they had our GSAR's equipment.
That's when Cherokee Heights was a mess and they were, they had saw teams that was going from the city out cutting trees in the city. And the stuff wasn't sitting there not being used, it was being used, but it was just being used.
Being used with the city. And then our fire department had to go buy new equipment because our equipment was being maintained and used by the city. And that's what he just said. They had, they got, we got our own saw unit now at the county and they went and bought brand new saws for it. That, that's just, that's needless, that's needless spending.
Yeah.
But the, just go back to what I was, the MOU is what I come up here for, was to get, just saying that we were wanting to be able to use the nine pieces of equipment with Georgia Fire.
Thank you for that, chief. I didn't, I didn't mean to get on that tangent, I've just been wanting to answer for that for six months.
Okay, we carried over. Any more on it?
Carry it over.
Okay, the courthouse control and the VAV box turnkey project.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, this is a proposal, uh, from Train Technologies, uh, to supply and install, um, uh, VAV boxes. Uh, put an explanation in there behind the summary sheet, uh, from our account manager on what that is. It's for the courthouse, it's to supply heat throughout the courthouse and individual offices. Um, if you haven't had a chance to read this yet, basically what it is is the, uh, the courthouse was designed as a, with a air handler system, uh, VAV system to supply heat. And it constantly blows air during the, during the winter months. And those individual boxes regulate the heat in these, in the individual offices upstairs and then on, on the ground floor. And so the explanation that they have of what the problem is, is some of those are very old and they don't work. That's why they have problems with heat over in the courthouse, they have since I've been here. Uh, and so this is a, a project, a very expensive project to go in there and change. And I think, um, there's roughly about seventy some odd boxes that they have to change in the system, uh, to be able to supply heat in every individual office in the courthouse. Uh, that's the back hallway, that's everything, that's back hallway, front hallway, upstairs and downstairs. Um, but, uh, this is something that's gonna need to be done before we start to encounter very cold weather. They, they work what's over there now some, but it doesn't do the job. They still have to use floor heaters and such over there, only for that reason. Um, but the last page, near toward the last page is the product, uh, the, the project, uh, nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
And really this is just to, uh, do the variable air volume.
Yes, sir.
But is the duct terminal in good enough a shape to spend that much money on?
Yes, sir. I, 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 when, way back when they went through to assess this, I did ask, check everything that needs to be replaced at the time we're gonna do this so we make sure we don't have to keep backtracking. And they checked and said, everything's fine, but you've got to change those boxes out. We have new units over there now and, but this is old, these boxes are very old. I think they were put in in the nineties sometime. Um, but, uh, some work, some don't work, some works a little bit. But, uh, this would be, um, the fix-all to, to be able to supply them heat in that courthouse.
Well, I, I sure hope it is.
Yeah.
Well, this include the wiring?
Going back in two now, this ain't gonna work.
Yeah. I wonder if it's gonna include the electrical and all, it's probably gonna have to be done.
They said, and also too, they said there could be some, some, uh, construct, reconstruction and construction as part of this to be able to get to some of those areas where those boxes are located.
Yeah.
So this might not be the total price, we might have to pay some co- uh, some cartoners.
Well, that was one of the questions I asked them when they, when they came to do the assessment. And I said, you need to make sure that you include everything in here so we don't, like Commissioner Bursette, we don't keep going back in two and for that one, that one reason.
Mr. Chairman, you know, and I was, I guess it's just naivety on my part when I'm thinking, okay, when we put those new units up there, I think, what is, two or three that we were replacing?
Yes, uh, actually five.
I've looked at.
Five units.
The one that, the three hundred and seven thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
So it was five of them at that cost?
No, one was around five and the, there was two or three that was around, I think altogether was, those three together were like three hundred thousand. Yeah, they were forty tons, some thirty, forty, and one was fifty ton.
I know, so I, I come over here, we had to replace one of like three hundred and something pounds.
Yes, sir.
All right, then, so I, there are another one went out.
Mm-hmm.
So those were the condensing units, I guess?
Yes, sir, those were the condensing units.
So that didn't have, so now they're coming about the heat. And I guess in my mind, I'm just wondering, did they know about this heat situation? When they were doing that and if so, it'd been nice to let us know then that, hey, you know, y'all.
The old, the old system was there was designed to use these VAV boxes.
And that was the old system?
The old system. So that's how these were to design for that reason, because of the size of the, because, because of the size of the building and the age of the building, because there's really, it's not energy efficient whatsoever.
I guess Train, did they know this whenever they put these new?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Cause it wouldn't have been nice if they just told us that, hey?
Yeah.
This is something y'all.
Yeah.
Well, Scott had a survey done on the, on the, um, courthouse and all of this was added into the sales tax, splosh tax that didn't pass. One important note, State Patrol building didn't pass, now we gotta come up with a million and a half. Just an example of how much money, you know.
This was the, the changing of the eat, the heating and air over there along with doing some remodels to give them more court space was included in the two original splosh referendums.
Now we gotta come up with.
So now we talking about, like I said, we know about a million, just to make a nice round number there. And like Commissioner Sam said, and it could be some change orders in that.
Yeah.
So, and that's something we gonna have to get back. But then we also, I'd say we got to have money for that. Then on the State Patrol.
Yeah.
The other, money for that.
If we, uh, and just so you know, um, if we use the rest of our ARPA money, it would pay for this, but there would only be just a little bit money left, probably no, no more than about twenty thousand dollars left in ARPA. If we use the ARPA money to do this project.
And then we still, my still resonating question is, on the State Patrol, where are we gonna get the money for that?
I'll have to get it off of that after we get the splosh right there from the, after we pay for the overpass.
Or, or take it out of reserves, whichever.
Or the reserves.
But that reserve is there for, for what it denotes, it's for emergency contingencies and, like I say, again, not being anti-State Patrol, but we still need to find a way that we can do this building and we definitely not gonna come out going upon taxes and all that, you know, to put that building there. And I know this near and dear to Timmy's heart, he just lives and dreams it, you know? And, but I think we need to try to find out how we gonna pay for it, Timmy, and I think it'd be great.
So, well, I'm trying to understand how this thing works. Uh, the units that we have now is gonna blow the air, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
And each one of these offices have a box and probably got coals in it.
Mm-hmm.
Air comes across each individual box.
The heating coils are on the backside, so when the air comes through, they can regulate it based on the temperature, the thermostat.
So there's no like furnace in that building that supplies the heat?
They're, they're individual boxes, yes.
So, and then, piggyback on what he's saying, so you got these new units we just put up there, three hundred and seven thousand dollar piece, that's for the condensing, that's for the air? That's for cooling?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so they going through the same duct work that this eight old boxes right now, but they, they don't work for those boxes? I mean, I mean, the air's going through there, but I'm trying to figure.
The boxes ain't working no more.
That's correct, yeah, when the, yeah, that's correct, yeah. Uh, you can turn the heat off and you, then you have air. And then when you turn the heat on, you're gonna activate each one of those boxes, depending on where it's at.
They have, have heat strips on them?
Yeah.
And air goes through them and heats it up.
I have a little heater in each room.
Yeah, and they already have them there, we just gotta replace them cause hardly none of them's working, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So got to replace all those?
Yeah, and there's a, there's boot koodles of them.
And then this.
Seventy-six of them, I think.
I think that's what it was, seventy-six of them.
And they go replace every one of them.
And they do that whenever they put these new units in, that these weren't gonna work.
Right. Should've been nice if they just let us know.
Still have to pay for it.
Yeah, but it's, it makes you feel better.
Feel better.
Yeah.
They wanna get another million right before winter.
Well.
Merry Christmas. There be something else wrong with me. Now, I don't see no other way to go about it, I mean, I'm gonna have to have heat. Uh, if you go to saying, hey, okay, well, let's put a space heater in every office, you know what's gonna happen? They're gonna leave it on so it won't be cold in there in the mornings.
That's right.
And we gonna have a burnt down courthouse.
And Train is, I guess, they the only one that can do this?
From what we've been told, yes, sir, they specialize in it, cause that, that's will come with the controls and everything with the system. I know they've always had problems with heat over there, even when we were there eight years ago. And, uh, it's, the building's, is very inefficient. I mean, you got single pane windows and, you know, high ceilings and, yeah, it's just not, not designed. But this is, this is to hopefully, hopefully remedy the syst- remedy the problem.
Well, I would hope if we had just commissioned votes to do this and like I say, we pretty much got our bike against the wall, that we need to make sure we got a clear understanding with Train or whatever, look here, we wanna know everything.
Somebody doing.
We don't wanna come back and come out, well, you know, now you know what y'all need to do this right here now, you know, and.
So, and it's my understanding too that like, they control the heat and the air in that building, right? It's on a computer.
Yes, sir.
We actually can't, a maintenance man can't go over there and turn it on, turn it to the degree?
It's all automated.
Or anything like that. So, um, there's where you get into, I'm thinking that they're gonna have to do it because our system runs through that. So these boxes, are they gonna be computerized in, are they gonna be digital? Are they gonna have turn knobs on it?
That part I do not know, but I can find out. I'm hoping to talk to Chris, our contact with Train tomorrow morning, he's out today, I tried to reach him today.
Well, do, do you think, I mean, cause we've got a little time, whoever that's represented from Train that could come here and look us in the face and kind of tell us what's going on?
I can sure ask him.
Yeah, yeah, just.
Yep.
Gentlemen, we may also in that, during that time, wanna give some scrutiny to their contract. I was just looking through and they do have a limited warranty of twelve months. Um, and then they've also got a good bit of, uh, limitation of liability and indemnity language that is not friendly for the county, so it, it may be something also that we wanna take a look at.
That's what we need to look at all of it.
Twelve months on something like that ain't, ain't, ain't limited, it don't need to be limited.
And when I talk with Chris tomorrow, I'll mention to see if he could be at our very next meeting. And then in the, in the meantime, we can talk with him about the contract too.
Okay. Any more on it? Not a little carried over?
Would y'all rather, you wanna, well, I'll put it on the gin if y'all wanna table it till we get some of these things ironed out?
Right, I would think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got it working, haven't they, so far?
Yeah, it's working, but one thing, part of this system is, they're gonna have, they'll have to turn the system off to be able to make, to do these installations. So you really don't wanna do it right now anyway, cause they won't have any air over there. So you kinda wanna do it during the fall when it's still pleasant outside and they can make it bearable.
That's why I'm saying, we got a little time in there right now, we can.
Okay. All right, well, let's, let's table it then. That, that ought, would y'all table it?
Yes.
Okay.
They will.
Well, we ain't gonna have a whole lot of time now, cause, um, they ain't, winter's coming. I mean, and that's but a few months and they told me out, there's gonna be three months before they can even start, right?
Uh, that, that's one thing I needed to verify with Chris to find out for sure. But I, I'll find that out very first thing in the morning, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's table it. Let's go on to a probate court fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment. Okay. Mr. Hendrix, you got that one?
Yes, sir. Um, they've come in, I think, twenty-three percent below, um, their budget from last year. I know there's gonna be, they were some, um, employees and some payroll deducted off of that. Um, I would like, I would like for us to give them a little more than what we did. Not saying they get, you know, what they turned in, what they needed for a budget. Um, but they have some training stuff that they're gonna have to pay for, um, off of this budget this year. Mr. Calvin, he wasn't able to go for health reasons and spend that money on the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. Um, I really just don't want a new judge coming in, Ms. Janet Thrier, and being a little restricted. We got her training to pay for, they got Ed Cady's training to pay for and Calvin's that were supposed to come out of the twenty-twenty fiscal year budget, but it's now gonna have to come out of twenty-twenty-five. All I'm asking is, we come up thirteen percent, uh, you know, that they'll still have a ten percent cut from what they had last year. And, and that'll get it to where they ain't gonna be restricted much, you know? Um, you know, you got inflation anyways. So cutting them, cutting them twenty-three percent, that, that's a big cut on a probate court office, I think. Especially with new, with a new judge fixing to take the reins.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, I appreciate your concern, Commissioner Sam, may I? Now, you say it's twenty?
How much percent, twenty-three?
I'll have to, it could be twenty-seven, it was twenty, twenty-three or twenty-seven percent. They were cut from their budget of the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year.
Cause.
Now, they were probably more than that under what they were actually asking for, for this twenty-five fiscal year.
Cause what I'm looking at, and maybe, maybe I'm looking at something wrong here, but it's not twenty-something cent, but maybe like, more like eleven percent that was cut from the budget from last year to this year.
You got the budget right there?
Yeah, it's like.
All right. It was twenty-seven percent in red on when we had our, or twenty-three when we had the budget meeting.
Okay, all right, right now they got, last year was twenty, I mean, two twenty-seven, eight fifty-three.
Okay.
This year is two eighteen, eight nineteen.
Two eighteen?
Yeah, two eighteen, right.
What it says?
Yeah, so you're talking about what, uh, just eleven thousand dollars.
Well, where, where'd you get it in from?
Well, this is, this is in it.
Okay.
And, and also it's, it did some line items, like you say, on the training. Uh, one thing that the group insurance, okay, it went from fifteen, they got twenty-seven in here this year. And, uh, the seminars and staff training, they got six thousand this year versus thirty-four last year. And, uh, the seminars and staff training, they got six thousand this year versus thirty-four last year. And one of the things, I think, that, uh, it talked with the finance, uh, director, one, just came up way back, you know, about eleven thousand dollars we were cutting. And it was because the new judge that would be coming in wouldn't be at the same pay, uh, pay scale that, uh, one is there now. And, uh, right now, she won't take office until January, which will be six years until our fiscal year. So at that time, you know, if it's something really, you know, egregious to where she got to have some more money or whatever, then she could do a budget amendment, right, Scott?
Yeah, you, you amend the budget.
You can amend the budget, so right now, they only got cut overall, like, by eleven thousand dollars.
Well, if you go back to twenty-three, they were two-thirty-two, seven oh nine, twenty-four, they got cut back to two-twenty-seven, now they're down to two-eighteen.
Right.
So, I mean, that's well over.
But his salary is a lot more than.
He's a lot more than what hers is.
See, he's had three elections.
Yeah, but they all gonna have a five percent, she's gonna be more than what he come in at, though.
Her starting salary's gonna be more than what Calvin started at.
Mm-hmm.
Read state law.
I'm talking start, start, but I'm talking right now.
State, state law gives, state law gives a direct amount these constitutional officers have to start at.
And, and I will apologize on my, on my percentage, maybe when we was in the, um, in this budget meeting, maybe that was a three-year, maybe that was a three-year percentage that it had been cut four-year, and I will apologize for that, I might have misunderstood it. But, uh, I know, I seen it in red and I wish I had that paper in front of me, but it was cut like twenty-three to twenty-seven percent in that timeline. So I might have misunderstood what I was reading.
Yeah, that was, I was just trying to find out, I said, well, maybe.
Commissioner Burden?
Yes.
And the other thing you gotta think about, when Judge Bennett went into office, Judge Bennett went into office, what, twenty-four years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And his starting salary was that, this amount, well, state law's changed since then.
Right.
Plus you've had that five thousand dollar constitutional officer raise, you've had that two thousand dollar constitutional officer raise, that's seven thousand more dollars that Calvin didn't have when he first started twenty-five years ago, that's added to the base budget. And then now, you've also got all those merit increases that all the county employees got, and all that's listed. If, uh, Ms. Beverly was in here, she could actually show you the breakdown of that. So you're talking about, she's gonna start close to twenty thousand dollars more than what Judge Bennett started at twenty-plus years ago.
But I'm saying, but right now, her salary will be less than what he's making, not that we'll be.
It'll probably be, it, it's gonna be a little less, it's not gonna be what you think.
And I think that's one of the things that, uh, the finance department, they looked at is that, okay, this is a new person coming in, they get, they're a probate judge, but they won't be coming in at the same salary as the probate judge that's there now.
Leaving.
So they bite that amount out, just figuring, you know, okay, because, you know, if you left it in there, you really have a surplus in that end.
Okay, now, when you got through, you go on to train?
Plus you got the training.
Well, they increased the training budget by about almost twenty-five hundred dollars. Seminars and staff training.
Yes, but like Calvin, he, the training act, but long to come out of twenty-four budget, he's got to come out of twenty-five budget now. Because his, he was sick during, in then that April when he was supposed to go do that training.
But, and like I say, I, I think, you know, like I say, I know we're gonna have a change of the guard over there come January, but as it stands right now, we, that'd be, we'll be halfway into the budget year then. And we already approved this budget, you know, for them, and, uh, like Scott said, we can always go back and amend the budget, change it if she gets in there and sees that, hey, and can show, this is why I need this amount to be increased, you know, 'cause they are constitutional officers.
Yeah. If she runs short, we can amend it.
Right.
Any more? Anybody got anything else?
No, sir, I'm good.
Carry it over. All right. Carry it over. L, proposed ARPA purchase airport vehicle.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Morning, how you doing, Frank? Uh, so here to ask for, uh, purchase of, uh, two new vehicles for the county airport, these are to replace the, uh, aging crew cars that we use out there. Uh, for pilots come in, they need to ride in town, get something, go to a meeting or whatnot, or if they're, uh, delayed because of weather, as we get, as of late, they'll, uh, use the vehicles to get into town to get a hotel for them or something like that. If you look in your, uh, believe in your handout, there you should have the, there's a PowerPoint slide in there with the different slides of the vehicles we currently have. Uh, an old Ford Taurus and a Ford Explorer, uh, both of which have just about a hundred, a hundred forty thousand, a hundred thirty thousand miles each. Taurus is, uh, running pretty rough, uh, but we still utilize that one. Uh, the Explorer, we find for us to continue to use as a county vehicle, we do loan that out quite often to, uh, four-H wreck department or, um, uh, the voting folks when needed throughout the year or for training. But those two vehicles will be through government pricing, they're two small SUVs, five-seaters, and, um, here, that's your question.
Why don't we furnish automobiles for people that ride around in, that fly into Wakefield? Everywhere I ever went, I had to rent me one.
Sir. Well, no, it's, it's.
I mean, ain't, ain't we got plenty of vehicles out there besides those, too?
No, sir.
We don't have a van out there?
We have a van that is in a rotation between, uh, the wreck department, four-H and ourselves, it's a fifteen passenger, uh, van to utilize. So if one person flies in and they need a vehicle, you're checking out a fifteen passenger van for one person. We normally maintain that if the army comes in, the Blackhawks, and they wanna go grab lunch, they can cram, you know, fourteen, fifteen people in there, go get a bite to eat. That's normally what we use the van for.
Did we buy these two, did we buy these automobiles, Scott?
I don't know, uh, they're very old, so I'm not sure.
Was they gang to the airport from the, uh, shift department or something?
I think one of these, we got from the help department, you talking about the, the Tor- Ford Taurus?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think one of those is one that came from the help department some years and years ago.
The Taurus is the one that still has the help department sticker on it.
Yeah, I thought that's where it came from.
But to answer your question about why we have the vehicles for them, it's, it's not like commercial, these are general aviation, so they're flying their personal planes, they land. Um, they may come in to conduct business, today alone, we had two private jets land, uh, both of which came in to do business in our county to either continue business or do business. So if they need a vehicle, it's not the people they're bringing, it's mainly the pilots, the people coming in will rent a vehicle, the pilots don't have that type of budget, so it's a courtesy vehicle. Every general aviation airport in the country provides some type of either free or cheap to, to loan out, uh, vehicle for them to use. And they range from what we have there, old D W vehicles, to you go to Orlando, you're checking out a Mercedes Benz for free, you flying in a jet, but handing keys on Mercedes, it just depends on where you're at.
Where county airports always furnish courtesy vehicles, go to town, go to hotel, or whatever.
From what I understand.
That, that is an integral part of hotel, I mean, the, um, airport operations, my opinion, and what's out there now is a total embarrassment to that facility that we're trying to do.
And also, uh, Frank, a lot of time you have like these, like I say, corporate, uh, individuals coming in, that's maybe like, say someone that's coming out to start up a business or industry here. That they may be having to go into town for a meeting or something like that, and not meet out there. And, uh, so I guess this is what you envision as them using them, or this is what they already do, and the pilot, like you say, sometime may have to go in.
That's correct, I mean, uh, case in point, with Sunday night, a gentleman flew in, he was diverted because of weather in Florida, couldn't fly any farther. I didn't know who he was, he showed me his ID, I gave him a set of keys, went to the hotel for the night, came back the next morning, we fueled him up, and, I'm sorry, it was Saturday, he come in Sunday, and, um, come to find out, he's the CEO of an aircraft manufacturing company in Florida. So, I mean, very, very humble, modest man, was, uh, get a call for Uber, but we don't have Uber, so I handed him a set of keys, and he was able to go to the hotel, spent money in town, came back, bought fuel, went home. He'll now tell his friends, hey, where you cross is here, fly your planes in, he'll take care of you, you know, pays dividends, it really does.
But don't tell them we're gonna have Mercedes, now.
And this, that'll be next year, I'm coming, that's for them.
Won't you rent him here?
No, but I, I'd be sleeping outdoors then.
You could beat Uber, you retire, you start Uber and lay across.
Yeah. But, uh, like Jared said, and I mean, it's a lot of good thing, positive thing that's happening at the airport, and we don't wanna
Yeah.
get right down to the finish line and say, oh, you can go there, but man, I'm gonna tell you, you better pray when you get in that vehicle, we don't know if you're gonna make it or not, you know?
Didn't I see something about some, uh, charging stations out there?
Oh, yes, sir, uh, ground broke today on that, uh, they were delayed last week because of the storm, uh, so that's for Beta, uh, Beta's doing the electrical, uh, aircraft along with Archer. Archer's based in Georgia, Beta's in Vermont, uh, but they're putting in a free charging station for us for when those planes start coming in, the planes can charge. And they're also giving us two automobile charging stations that'll be in the front parking lot. Uh, the beauty of that is, once the, uh, period of time elapses where they gave us the equipment for free, in about two to three years, and anytime a plane or a car charges, we'll start to see some of the, the profit come back to the county, so they'll buy the fuel, but buy the electricity.
That's right, not easy.
Would it be safe to say that we might need to get some electric vehicles?
I, I don't think that'd be a good idea personally, that's me personally, not, not this county, I don't think it's really a good idea right now, but, and there's a lot of.
I don't neither, I was just, you know.
If you cheaper buying a gas, those are going on, electrical.
So, right now, these vehicles are, I mean, that, another thing too, that, which is, I think you stated in your, might have been in your weekly report, that a lot of time you don't know when these planes are coming in, so it's not like you say, well, okay, we know we're gonna have one at three o'clock today and have a vehicle, but you don't ever know, you know?
At nine o'clock this morning, we had six planes on deck, zero of them let us know they were coming prior to nine AM when they arrived, so.
There's not a rent?
Sir?
There's not a rental service out there?
Uh, there is, sir, there's the Enterprise rental car, which you have to give them twenty-four hours notice, they will bring the keys in the car out to the FBO for them to pick up, and that's normally, like today, one passenger had already reserved that, the car was there this morning, when they got there, but the pilots didn't have access to a vehicle, it's not part of their budget when they come in. Um, and then there is the one out at, um, the detail, the car repair shop down the road here, forget the, there's two local, basically, uh, big chains. And then we have the other one, which is the Love Transporter, I believe it's called, here in town, they just recently started a rental as well. So they do have those options, yes sir, a lot of times it's after hours, so there's no way they're getting a vehicle, Enterprise will not deliver or pick up on the weekend because they're not stacked. Um, Love is whatever they have available to bring those folks out or those vehicles out, so if they haven't reserved it during the week, they're not gonna get it all weekend.
Which one of these models you recommend?
I'm a Nissan Florida guy, sir, but, uh, I think the ones I put in there are Chevys, uh, those are with the government pricing, which is very good, I was pretty blown away by the little cost to the government for the government pricing, so.
And just all the companies, even for the, the rate department, don't let you have that.
Equinart. Same company, yes sir.
Yeah, you like them pretty good?
There's a Chevy Trax and a Chevy, uh, Equinart, sir.
Where can this medic come from?
That would, that's included in that ARPA money, I told you, if, if y'all move forward with the courthouse thing, it'll pretty much use all the money up at that point. If you do, if you buy these two and then do, also do the courthouse project.
I'll support buying the one that just like last, the recrush you got, have all the same model, looks like, be good for maintenance.
And I have the budget to support the maintenance on these vehicles, no different than what I were doing on the, uh, the Explorer and the Taurus, come out of my budget for the upkeep.
And I think you say these other two, we gonna maybe try to set them on Gov. deals?
The Taurus will go to Gov. deals, and I'd like to try to hold on to the Explorer a little bit longer, it's still viable for us to use, um, or to loan out to the county as needed. I don't think it's ready to go to Chevy, the Taurus is, she's done, so.
You know, I think, but everything that's happening out there, the airport and, and just a lot of the positive thing that's happening out there, and, uh, I think that'd be a good thing, if we could do that, you know, if the budget will allow it, if we have the money to, you know, purchase them, you know?
What's the month of fuel sales average, do you remember, or six months, or?
It varies, I mean, last month alone, we brought in almost ninety-two thousand dollars in total fuel sales, last, the month of July, yes sir. Forty-one percent of that is what we bring in for the county, so that was after expenses, uh, this month, we're looking to make, match that as well. Uh, jet fuel is our number one seller, that's what brings in the most money for the county, gas is, it's not a wash, but it's, you're one of the customers that come in to buy the fuel, not down the road at Douglas or Alma, but to come here and do other business, so the money that they're spending is hopefully in town, not necessarily at the airport, and then rental for the hangars and the land leases.
Airbag is part of that fuel sales, too.
Yes, sir, they, uh, they get fuel every day between thirty and forty gallons, that adds up over a thirty-day period, absolutely. Some days you run a two or three, bro, it just depends on unfortunate circumstances that support that, so.
Okay. Anything else, huh?
Well, not on that, but just, uh, update Frank on the building and the, uh, I think Sammy, he made recognition, which I thought was good, about having it wired.
Yes, sir.
And also, uh, the building that's out there, did we ever get it sold?
Yes, sir, that building did sell two weeks ago on Gov. deals, the gentleman's coming, this coming Saturday to pick it up, he had damage from the storms, it was about a week delayed. Uh, they just started doing the concrete forming, but the forms are for that today, uh, those are pouring concrete tomorrow or Wednesday, weather permitting. Got the quote for the electric, um, pretty decent for wiring the whole building up, and that's all, uh, LED lighting, timers, um, and switches on there, so, you know, it'll be saving money in the long run on that. Uh, but that building should be erected by, my hope is end of September.
What company is that from, on electrical?
Uh, the only one that I got a, uh, reply back from was, um.
Carter.
Carter, thank you.
Okay.
I think I was, I'm glad he brought that, made that suggestion about going and wiring it while we're already in it, you know, and, uh, put it in there.
Um, what, we sold a building?
Yes, sir.
What, how big a building was it?
Twenty-four wide by thirty-four deep and, uh, twelve high and center.
I got you, it wouldn't have been sufficient for that saw's, well, equipment then, sure, that trailer's probably longer than that. How, how, how long you reckon the truck is and the trailer, chief?
I think it's, uh, twenty, I think it's a twenty-foot trailer, I think.
Twenty foot, and your truck's probably twenty foot that's pulling it, if it's a four-door?
It's, it's, it's pretty big.
Okay.
Yeah, our jet fuel truck just sticks out the rear end.
I got you, yeah. Okay, that slab's still there, though, where that building was?
Oh, absolutely, we're tying into that room, so. They, they poured out about eight inches thick.
Yeah, okay.
All right, anymore?
Thank you, Frank, good work, Frank.
We'll move on. Carry it over. All right, proposed Georgia State Patrol post site, Fullford Road.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I put this on here because of the information we got back from WWDA, um, I think it was mentioned and decided upon that we thought the property was gonna be on the direct corner, right on the corner, but actually it shifted down a little bit further down on Fullford Road. And I wanna just make sure and verify that with you all, that that's okay to go with, so before I get it surveyed and get a deed drawn up.
Okay. That's, that's actually on the other side of that property land from the old.
Yes, sir.
Road, ain't it?
Yeah, there's some distribution lines, there's some distribution lines there to the left if you're looking at it, and so it shifted back a little bit.
And there's a big, uh, twelve-inch water main laying right there, too.
Mm-hmm.
I installed it right, right there, I knew we had to get over that, hope of that.
So that's something that, would that work right there, you think?
Yeah.
Right where it's at, yeah, I mean, I doubt it would work there.
Yeah, this property here, you thought it was gonna be up here, it's gonna be right there.
You said, right, man, you know, we got to clear all this with Timmy now, you know that.
Yeah, you're good with it, keep.
Timmy, you okay with that?
I'm good with it, yeah, to the right, still gonna set it at an angle, 'cause there's not gonna be nothing in front of it anymore.
Yeah, 'cause, see, if you put it in our road, there's, uh, there's all kind of cable.
Blackboard lines and all that.
There's all kind of cables, water main and all that, laying in there.
So that's gonna work?
Yeah, that'll work, because they can still set it at an angle, 'cause there's not gonna be nothing in front of it, called the power lines.
That's right.
Big sign.
Okay.
And I, I just wanted to make sure y'all are aware of that before we move forward and.
All right.
And do it.
Any more on it? Okay, carry it over. County manager report?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Commission comment?
Hold on.
I hear motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Meeting adjourned, we'll be back in, what, twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes.
That'll work.
That'll long.
Twenty?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Everybody get a minute.
Ten minutes, Red?
Sir?
Five-thirty. Yeah.
Can't leave stuff for ten minutes.
Four-forty. We've got a public hearing.
Yeah, we got a public hearing now.
Four-forty?
Public hearing, four-thirty, so be, probably five-thirty. Probably five-thirty.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Something like that. Come on.
Is this the new one?
Wave the, uh, fledgled units and the prayer. We've already done one, so. I hear a motion that we approve the agenda.
Some move. Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're on these public hearings.
Public hearing now.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, hold on. I don't jump in here. Thank y'all. Oh, we gotta go back. Okay. We got a roll call. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Burson.
President.
Mr. Pope.
President.
Mr. Locust.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
It is. Okay. All right. Now, this is a proposed amendment to the work counting zoning text in Article Six to add Section Six Sixteen, orientation of manufactured homes. Mr. Come up here.
Yes, sir. Essentially, we're looking to request the tax amendment. It would, if you prefer, I can read the text first or just give you a quick synopsis first, whichever you prefer.
Totally up to you, sir.
Essentially, we're wanting to make it so that manufactured homes, they orient them parallel to the road. It does allow some exceptions. For example, if you've got a flag lot where you've got a piece of property with a strip that goes to the highway or the road, whatever, that they would be exempt. You've also got, for example, lots that are, you'd have the trailer back four hundred foot or more back from the road. Those would also be exempted from it.
That makes sense. So whenever you say it's like four hundred feet from the road, other word, they could put it, they wouldn't have to be facing the road?
Uh, yeah. They would be exempt from the road, basically.
Okay.
But it'd have to be at least four hundred foot.
Okay.
Uh, just to give you the proposed text, I believe they also gave you a copy of it. Either way, I'll read it off.
Yeah.
Section Six Sixteen, orientation of manufactured homes. Section A, manufactured homes shall be oriented with the front door facing the road. And subsection B, in the case of flag lots, where a lot is connected to a roadway by a strip of land and/or access easement and is not directly facing the roadway, or in cases where the manufactured home is greater than four hundred foot from the road right, from the roadway and is not visible from the roadway, this rule shall not be enforced.
So we're adopting a new section, but we're saying that sometimes it won't be enforced?
Uh, we're allowing exceptions for areas where they would not be visible from the road essentially. Or in cases where they are set back from the road, where you would not be able to see them. For the flag lots, they may be back behind other houses where you wouldn't be able to see that.
Does that leave it up to interpretation by somebody when it will be enforced or not?
Uh, I mean, you've got the distance from the right of way, so four hundred foot.
It's hard, Mr. It's hard to, because our county's unique, that we have big lots in agriculture areas. So it's hard to, um, to just say that everybody's gonna put their mobile home, manufactured home, put it up to the road. So what we're trying to do, so it wouldn't be discretionary, was actually put some parameters or some limits or some guidelines to say when you can or when you don't have to face it towards the road. That's what we're trying to do there.
Right.
Um, so if you've got a flag lot, which is a, which is like, usually it's got a thirty foot strip that comes up off the highway and then it opens up to a lot, an acre lot or whatever, then you can do it. And keep in mind, this only applies in the zone areas. The intent is not to go out into rural agriculture areas and require this. The intent is the areas around the city where your, where subdivisions are happening, recombining lots are happening and we're getting, um, and I'll give you an example. Over on, um, I think it's called for Columbus, we've got some mobile home, manufactured homes been put in, have been put in, they're perpendicular to the street.
Right.
So then what you get is you get like you got a big mobile home park over there. So that's the, that's the whole idea is the, is the aesthetics of the neighborhood.
Well, some of those lots is only like seventy-five foot wide, I believe. So you'd buy, put it in a long ways if you got a seventy, eighty foot trailer.
Well, they're, they're just having to have a smaller trailer or they'd get a variance from border zoning pills to locate it a different way. So, and most of them are, most of those over there, I believe, have been widened out because our ordinance says that you have to, if you own more than one lot, and you have to combine those lots to meet what the ordinance, what the required lot size is. So, um, in R seventy-five, your minimum lot size is seventy-five feet. In R ninety, your minimum lot size is, is ninety feet. In R fifty, your minimum lot size is fifty feet. Now, that would, would create an issue in the district where you would probably find that you can't have a mobile home short enough to fit in there. But the seventy-fives, you got the fifty-sixes, um, fifty-six wides that will go. So you've got options that would have seventy-five foot wide lot. Matter of fact, we've got, um, uh, in Emerson Park, we got a subdivision, I think somebody's already came up and, and addressed concerns about. It's an entire block and they created twelve lots, six lots on one road, six lots on the other, and they're about eighty, eighty-five, eighty-eight foot wide lots. And they're gonna put seventy-six, um, puts homes in there, I think is what it's called for. So, or they're gonna put the minimum or the maximum they could put in there, so.
You say seven or six or seventy-six?
Seventy-six.
Seven and six mobile homes?
No, seventy-six, seventy-six feet wide.
Oh, okay.
So.
What's the, the distance between them, they have to be from the next lot?
There's twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
And then seventy-six, it may be the sixty, fifty-six, seventy-seven, so. I know we figured out that's the minimum setbacks on these lots, so.
Okay. How many, what is the reason in like a neighborhood do we have that would be able to do this around here?
Well, Emerson Park, they've, they've got blocks that are covered, like this block.
Coming available.
Yeah, and there's a block across the street from this block that somebody's working on. And then you got vacant lots, you know, throughout, uh, Old Winona Park area. I won't say Winona Park because that's owned by our nanny, doesn't allow me to affect them, but, um, back toward the town from there, I don't remember, South Dinglewood or whatever, um, what's it called, you got some of those areas. And just kind of around the city, you've got some blocks that haven't been developed, some just inside the city. And I know that there's a guy looking for lots now, um, vacant lots for some, some, some developments, so.
So in your opinion, this, this would be the thing to do, Jim?
That, that's my opinion, something we've tried to, uh, um, we've looked at for years. Um, you know, in the past, we've finally kind of said, well, you've got to build a porch that makes it, makes it look like it faces the road, but we never had an ordinance to stand on. Um, a lot of people's built porches, they take them, come out and then build a front porch to the step, um, and build a step toward the front door, and we've allowed it. But now this will be kind of different. Front door has to.
Passage.
Now, keep in mind, the manufactured home business builds what I call a shotgun manufactured home. It has a front door on the end with a porch on it. Now, that one could sit in there perpendicular. So.
Or, or any, any mobile home that actually ain't built from the factory with a front porch, but if it's got that inside door, they can build a porch and it would pass.
And make it a front door.
What's the reason for that?
Just to improve aesthetics around, around the urban area, around the city. Getting a lot of requests and people trying to put them in there perpendicular. Uh, and, and the main reason is because they want to stack them there as many as they can get. Because you figure out, put one there perpendicular, and then I got, um, twenty foot between them, and you got a sixteen wide mobile home, and we got a fire hazard.
Yeah. Well, they trying to do that in Emerson Park now, I think.
So, and that's the whole thing, is try to, try to, uh, save the aesthetics of neighborhoods and make it look like a residential community and not a manufactured home park.
I know, uh, back when I was on the city council, right then, we came up with an ordinance where, because prior to that, you could just put the mobile home, you could in there in a kind of way, but you had to face the street. And like I said, to have porch on it and all this, and I think another thing, you had to have it underpin and something about the tires removed or something like that.
Well, they do that now.
Okay.
Because you, you buy a manufactured home, you don't own the axles. You rent the axles from, from the installer and the mover.
Rent the axles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rent the axles. Next thing, they'll take a ton of them, too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you rent the axles and tires.
So they'd really have to be in, you, if we done this right here, they would really have to be on their game per se, to go up there and order houses with doors on the ends.
So, and most, honestly, I think most of the houses you buy now have a door on the end.
Well, that's what I say. So we really wouldn't be doing much if that's the case.
But, you know, if they've got a door on the end, it's the front door, then that's, that's nothing, no different from building shotgun house on that lot.
Yeah. So when you say they got a door on the end, you mean that on that mobile home?
A side door.
You got a door that comes on the very end of the mobile home?
Most of the time, it's gonna be locked into the laundry room.
But going outside.
But it's going outside.
And they'll, and they'll have a porch. They got porches on the front door, so.
But they, and, and they actually do have porches that are on the ends, already tagged on, on the ends of houses now. But it's more or less like a side door. It's not a, it's not actually per se the front door, what we're doing with it.
And we based on the front door just because of that reason. And my thought is, if, if I can build a shotgun house that basically is no different from manufactured home loan, then I should be able to put a manufactured home the same way if it's permitted in that district. And, you know, we may run into some issues with this, might have to bring back for some amendments. Um, you know, everything's not perfect, first thing you write.
That's right.
Every good law, every law is a good law because it's chatty.
So, well, just something that someone brought up or just there's something the planning commission just?
There's something presented to the planning commission and, uh, and they, they recommended approval.
Okay.
Yeah, it's something that's been brought up over time, several times, we just never acted on it, so. But usually it's brought up amongst staff, so.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, has any opposed this? Anybody oppose this thing?
Somebody here opposed it. I just asked if anybody here opposed it.
Ain't nobody opposed it. Okay. Any of the commissioner comment?
Just carry on to the regular meeting.
I know we have to vote on this now, but we had a hearing.
Record meeting.
We'll conclude the public hearing and then we'll go into the regular meeting and it'll be on the agenda tonight.
Right.
Okay, no more comment? Yeah, here, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Hearing adjourned. Okay, we in the regular meeting, we're called order. We had a roll call. I'm gonna wave fledgled units and prayer. And approve the agenda. Have a motion.
Some move.
Second. I have motion and second. Approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda approved, okay. Now, we got a employee of the month. This is Teresa.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here to recognize Ms. Jody Thrift as employee of the month for August two thousand twenty-four. Jody began her career with us in February two thousand two as a communications officer in nine-one-one. She has worked in various departments within the county during her tenure here and has currently been the accounting specialist in EMA since May two thousand thirteen. That role has blossomed into multiple layers as she serves not only EMA, but fire rescue and the airport as well. Frank Bartanowitz, Airport Manager, nominated Jody writing the following. I have had the pleasure to work with Jody since February two thousand twenty-three. She is a positive soul who consistently performs her job to the best, best of her abilities and goes above and beyond. As the airport, fire department, and EMA accounting clerk specialist, she keeps the paperwork flowing, manages our logistical support, and is always available to share her knowledge and experiences that date back twenty-plus years with the county. She was instrumental in keeping things flowing during management change at the airport. From paying invoices for fuel orders in a timely manner, fuel truck rental invoices, land and hangar lease contracts, general knowledge, and keeping eight-ounce glass Coke bottles always available for purchase from her nineteen-fifties-era Coke machine. Jody is a solid performer who cares about her job, her fellow employees, and the county. It is for this reason that I'm nominating her for the employee of the month, August two thousand twenty-four. And our voting committee concur, and she won the vote. So Ms. Jody Thrift, you'll come up, so she can be properly recognized, please, ma'am.
She brings us our nineteen-fifty Coke. Ms. Thrift.
Thank you.
Great job and, uh, we love some of the nineteen-fifty old Coke bottles.
Great job, and, uh, we would love some of the nineteen fifty old Coke bottles. We would love to get some of them nineteen fifty Coke bottles.
Congratulations.
All right.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa.
All right, approval of the minute, meeting minutes for July twenty twenty-four. The work session, the regular meeting, the call meeting, and the call meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a move that we approve the meeting minutes for July twenty twenty-four, which are the work session, July eighth twenty-four, regular meeting, July eighth twenty twenty-four, called meeting, July seventeenth twenty twenty-four, and called meeting, July twenty-second twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Hendrix?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Agenda bid war. Physical year twenty twenty-four, Georgia D O two L big roadway improvement. Can we discuss that one? We all know what it is. I hear a motion that we accept a bid.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
And that would, that would be with East Coast asphalt for an amount of two million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, five fifty-five point fifteen, correct Scott?
That's correct.
And just for the record, which, which role would it be in the AME?
That's, uh, several of them.
Several of them, okay.
Yeah.
Let's see what. I believe he has a list up on there.
And this would be for resurfacing, right? Resurfacing only?
Yeah, that's that research for that. Front Road, Jamestown Road, North Augusta Avenue, South Augusta, South Augusta, Sycamore, Old Reynolds, and Wind Clay. Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. Anything else on it? Now let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Hendrix?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Project list for the physical year twenty twenty-five, local maintenance and improvement grant, L big.
Mr. Chairman, I, I left these on the, the regular, uh, agenda. You may just want to table these till we get through to some of the others. I know that y'all mentioned some other roads, I think, I can't remember, but.
Well, the thing we had to pave them two roads, for Gibbs Lane and, and, uh, Thick Pin Road.
Yeah, but we also.
But, go ahead, go ahead.
Now, you mentioned about the, uh, cost fight on it, you know, it's what it's going to cost, throw two roads. And we only had, uh, what like being two or three, but the estimated, and I guess it's an estimate, it was like two point one billion. And then we were going to try to, uh, I guess try to get a more closer amount to what it would cost. Not only that, we also talked about the, uh, possibility, whenever we reached that, uh, amount square for the, uh, overpass, that we would have money that we could release toward paving some of these other roads that we wouldn't have to wait on the regional, on Griffin and some of these other longer roads, it's going to take a lot of money. But maybe take this right here and, uh, use it for some of the smaller roads, you know, that wouldn't take as much money.
Uh, well, this money has already been, I mean, we can, all we got to do is put these projects on. And, uh, we need some of these dirt roads paved. We have been, we've been overlaying and we can use this money for paving. We've been skipping these paved roads for a long time. There've been no roads paved in Work County, now I'd like to see some roads paved in Work County. Some, if we can. These people, uh, and, and it would help the county, lot less maintenance on them, once we ever get them. And, uh, I think that if we do it and let the, uh, an engineer go ahead and design it and, uh, put it out for bid, and if we over the money on one, on the two roads, then maybe we can cut one of them and just do one of them, you know? And, uh, just give it the opportunity to start, if we could.
Probably what it's going to end up being, probably if we were to, if this commission was to vote, probably just one of those roads versus two, because I can't even really see getting both of them for that amount of money that we have.
Yep.
We'll go ahead and design both of them and then, you know, then if the engineer told us it'd be out of the money, then we just bid one of them.
I believe, uh, Mr. Scott, you can get that figured out, couldn't you? Almost to the.
Yeah, well, like I said, they, you, you really would have to find out really what it's going to cost after they run the engineering estimate. I could get them to run an estimate on both of them and then figure out from there.
Where we can, how far we can go.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I said we could just make this table until the next meeting. By that time you can have
Yeah.
some hard numbers.
And then, and just, you know, um, probably get statewide or instead of running some estimates.
Well, see, we used to build them and, uh, we would, uh, we'd like a two or three mile road. We may build half of it this year and two years later you build another half of it. You know, you, you can stock it, once it's designed and put on there. If you don't have it many, you can do part of it.
Well, I would hope to know if we were going to do it, we could do the whole thing. You do part of it, then you go have the other fifty percent mad at it.
Yeah.
Because you didn't do it, you know? So either we do it all or none, you know?
That's right. All right, I hear a motion to put the roads on.
What was your motion, you asked for what now?
Do I hear a motion that we, uh, paved the Thick Pin and the Gibbs Lane or no? Or table it?
Well, I would like this table until we can find out the amount, Mr. Chairman. And I know, like I said, I agree with you, we need to pave the road, but find out what it's going to cost and then, you know, see what our alternative would be. Whether we do one of them, or do both of them, or maybe can hold off until we get the splotch money that's coming in, which won't, won't be long.
I believe we need to go ahead and make a motion, have them put them on there, because we know we got the splotch money coming in, and it's going to be six, eight months down the road before we get them paved anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, and then that'll give County Manager time to get a hold, see pretty much almost to the penny how much it would cost. I know it's not going to be an exact, but we could release that money in six, eight months. I mean, it's not, it's not that we're going to go spend the money two months from now, it's still going to be six, eight months down the road.
Right.
And then that splotch money could start being released.
Okay. You going to make a motion to put them on?
That was, that was my motion, yes sir.
I'll second it.
You got a motion?
So what was, what was?
What's the motion?
The motion is to.
Put Gibbs Lane and Thick Pin Road on?
Go ahead and put them on there.
For the twenty twenty-five L M I G.
Okay.
We got a motion and a second.
Just hardly hear that on this end, what, put them on what?
The twenty twenty-five L big. That's what Sammy said.
Sign the L big to these projects. Thick Pin and Gibbs Lane.
So the motion is to approve this list right here?
These two roads, not the list, these two roads.
There's only two roads on here.
That's right, them two roads.
So you prove, the motion is to approve this, paving these roads right here?
Pave these two roads with that L big man. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, like I said, I, I agreed that, hey, we need to pave some road, but again, going back, if we could just hold the splotch monies, which won't be that long before we start being able to release some of this monies, and we could have them right there as a priority on the first part, that splotch money for paving. And, uh, instead of allocating all the money now to these two roads, and we know that we probably won't pay both of them. If anything, we would do good just to pay one of them.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Burris, but I was thinking that, that, uh, we probably ain't going to have them designed and ready to go for the next three or four months of the, uh, the arrangement, it ought to be already out for then, probably it's going to take several months to get it designed and ready to go.
That's why I'm saying, so we couldn't wait for the splotch money?
Well, you need to, you need to act on it, and by the time you get the roads, it will have splotch, it'll be up there.
Okay, so.
Pick up on it.
So from my understanding, you're saying we're going to bid for Griffin Road and, uh, Thick Pin?
Gibbs.
Oh, terrific.
Gibbs.
Gibbs and Thick.
Figuring that by the time we get them designed and everything, that splotch money will be coming in, that we could get it from the
If you have to have a little more.
And, and this L big.
See, we already got this L big on it.
So we're abandoning coming up with any other roads for the twenty twenty-five L big, correct?
Basically abandoning it, yeah, but right now we're going to pave some roads.
How, how many roads have we paved? I, I would, do we have a figure on that, how many roads? Melinda, do we have a number? How many roads have we paved in the last three years? Last three years, how many roads have we paved?
Smith Road and.
We had a, we had a list up to maybe last year. And I don't remember, but it, it was a lot.
Ton of roads being paved.
Yeah. I mean, this was back when we had the single county cheese splotch and some of the other.
We need to pave some roads. Okay, any more discussion on it? Let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
No.
Mr. Pope?
No.
Mr. Lucas?
Yeah.
Mr. Hendrix?
Yeah.
Chair votes aye, yes. Okay. Okay, C memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Forestry Commission. Y'all know what that's about? Who wants to make a motion on it?
I'll make a motion that we approved this memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Forestry Commission.
We got a second motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote on it, Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Hendrix?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, okay. Now, D. Courthouse Control and V A B Box Turnkey Project Proposal. Now y'all know what that is.
So they're the only ones that turned in a bid?
Well, we, we did that with the air conditions, the, the units that were changed out, and being it's the same system with the same uh, controllers and stuff, that's who we decided to go with. Not we decided to, but just makes sense to stay with them.
Stay with the same people?
Okay.
Anyway, we can get a little bit more than a twelve month warranty on this.
Well, I'll talk with Chris, I'll talk with Chris tomorrow morning. Um, he should call me back and then I can find out more about that, yes sir.
So I think we got a, we got a five year on the units that we put on the roofs, didn't we? I think it was a five year and then a ten year on parts, but five.
I don't know, I was thinking about it during the break. I know that, um, with the units we have in this building, I think the units there had a two year warranty and the warranty was out by the time we moved into the building. Because once you pick them up and they have them delivered, it starts, the clock starts ticking.
Because that's what we were talking about with the Sheriff's Department. You know, we replaced those ten and then we were going to buy ten more, and that's when they said, wait a minute, when you buy them, warranty starts.
That's correct.
Because we were going to store them out there, still theoretically brand new.
It was, the ones here, I think it was, I think it was a two year, it might have been a three year, but, yeah. We, I know, we, we ran out by the time it was, they were, by the time we moved in.
Right. I thought those on the courthouse just come a little bit better. I believe that's what I read somewhere, but I could be wrong.
So are y'all satisfied with this contract? You got to make some changes or look at something, or is it, is it vote now?
I think we discussed earlier that you all had, you know, some questions. You wanted the gentleman to come and speak with you, and then, uh, staff mentioned that as part of that process, there were some concerns with the contract also and address the warranty issue, and so hopefully we can do all those things.
So you recommend tableing it?
Uh, the contract, we would like to make some changes to the contract.
And that was one thing I was going to tell her, that they would to kind of critique that just a little bit more, and also with the money we spent with training, we need to be given some kind of consideration now with all this money we spent with them. And, uh, have that gentleman to come in here, Chris or whoever.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I, I'll see if I can get him to be here for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be good. Appreciate it. Thinking about that one. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, we'll just need a motion to table since we are in a meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table the Courthouse Controls and V A B Box Turnkey Project Proposal.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion on it? Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Hendrix?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, okay. Propose the Georgia State Patrol post site on Fullford Road.
We're on the probate court.
Probate court.
Probate court, we're on D.
Which one? Oh, D, D, I'm sorry. I done jumped over.
It'd be E with a probate.
E, probate court, physical year twenty-five budget amendment. Okay.
I would, I would like to at least get them back to where they was last year. And that would be a total of what this pa, what this thing says, eleven thousand dollars.
Difference, okay.
What I'm looking at from last year to this year is nine thousand.
Nine.
It was two forty-seven, it was two eighteen, this year it was two twenty-seven, last year.
He need to make that motion that we.
You see, I'm saying it's two twenty-seven, it's two eighteen, it's about nine thousand.
Looking for two eighteen?
Move to two.
Nine thousand thirty-four dollars.
Nine thousand thirty-four dollars.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion that we amend the probate court's fiscal year twenty-five budget to two hundred and twenty-seven, eight fifty-three.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What was the budget last year?
Two twenty-seven, eight fifty-three.
That's what the budget is, was last year.
It's nine thousand thirty-four dollars this year, shorter than it was last year.
With some training that they're going to have to pay for, and, you know. Get it back where it was at.
That'll get them back to where they were, that way they got the money for the training and Ms. Thrift don't walk in there without needed equipment that she might need.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, now, as far as in discussion, like I said, it's what, nine thousand seven dollars difference?
Right.
Uh, Ms. Thrift won't take office until January one, which will put us six months into the budget year.
Right.
And I would hope that we could just pay what she gets in there, and if it, well, she just has to have to have this money or whatever, we can look at it then, but I think right now, I don't think it would be wise and prudent just to put that amount in there not knowing that they're going to even need it, because I don't even know if they spent what they have.
Commissioner Burris, with all due respect, they're going to need it because all three of them have to go to training before December.
This budget was made for them with what, only two employees over there, and now you got, Ms. Thrift has already went to work over there. Making this transition going to be a lot better for us. Plus they added another employee over there, so they're back to a full staff over there, not as of this month.
And three of them have to go to training before December the thirty-first.
That's if they go.
No, they got to go. If, if Judge Bennett don't go, he's going to fall under some Superior Court guidelines that he's going to have to answer for. She's got to have her certification before she takes office January one. And, uh, Judge Katie has got to have his certification because he's got to go to do training, he's signing off on the paperwork whenever Judge Bennett ain't there.
So he's already assistant probate judge?
But they still got, so they got so many months, I can't remember how many months it is, I think it's a hundred and eighty. Six months, hundred and eighty days to get their certification.
All right, so what?
They all three got to go before December.
Okay, so, let me ask this question next, so an assistant probate judge, do they have to have training and certification before they can be assistant probate judge?
No, no, no. No, no, no. They work at the leisure of the judge.
Well, I, I thought they had to get training and all this stuff.
They got so much time before they have to get it done. And that's what we're trying to do is put that money back in there so they can get their training.
Because it wasn't long after he was over there, he was sending out letterhead and stuff as assistant probate judge and I always wondered about that. I thought that you had to have some kind of training and stuff before you could really get that, you know?
Probably got a certain amount of time he has to have it in.
Mm-hmm. Did we approve him?
No, not him, we didn't.
I mean, when Commissioner Burson, I'm not trying to be funny about asking this question, but did you have county certification when you were sworn in?
When I was sworn in?
Mm-hmm.
No, but I had one year to get it.
Exactly, that's my point here.
I had one year to get it. So how long does they have, how long they have?
I believe, I've read a hundred and eighty days, six months.
Yeah. I think they have to all do it.
And they, they do it twice a year.
Okay.
Well, they got six thousand dollars in the month, but training and staff training and everything and they have three.
Yes, but Calvin's training was budgeted in from the last, from the last budget.
Which was three thousand and so.
Plus his budget is made up with, without him having all the employees that he's got right now.
So right now you got.
Time value dollar.
So who, who's got to go to training? Ed, Katie?
Ed, Calvin and Janet.
So why would Calvin have to go if he's getting ready to go?
He, cause he was supposed to go in April. Of his, this last year he is.
They have it twice a year.
So it's really nothing they can really do to him, I mean.
Not unless they wanted to go back, you didn't get your training, so everything that you sign and everything went through this office is null and void. I mean, there could be some stuff they, they do to him, we don't know.
And then who's gonna wind up?
I say there's a motion made, there's a second, let's vote on it. That's what I say.
If, if the bo, I mean, if y'all are ready for a vote, y'all certainly can have a vote. If you'd like to hear from me, I've.
I'd like, I'd like to hear from you, Attorney.
I'm ready for a vote, but go ahead.
Alright, thank you. Uh, OCGA fifteen dash nine dash two point one, I was just looking it up to see if I could answer some of those questions. Um, it does say with regard to qualifications and training requirements of associate probate judges. Um, all associate judges of the probate court shall have the same qualifications required of the elected judge of the probate court of the county for which the associate judge is appointed with the exception of the residency requirement. All full-time associate judges of the probate court shall complete the training requirements set forth for judges outlined in uh, fifteen dash nine dash one point one. All part-time associate judges of the probate court shall be required to attend a minimum of nine hours of training in an area related to probate court, mental health, traffic matters, as determined by the elected judge. So essentially, de, is determined, the level of training required is determined if you're part-time or you're full-time. Uh, of course, my understanding currently, I believe, is Judge Katie is a full-time associate judge at this time. Um, Ms. Thrift will be the full-time probate judge upon taking office January one, although she is currently an employee in the office. So although she could fall under the lesser training now, it would make sense that she go ahead and or at some, you know, she's gotta have that full-time training certainly. Uh, does that answer some of those questions? I don't see in this code section at least the one hundred and eighty days, but that probably is referenced in that fifteen dash nine dash one point one. So I could see if I could pull that up real quick on my phone. But hopefully that was answering at least one of the questions. New judge orientation training course issued by the Institute of Continuing Judicial Education of Georgia. And then there's additional training each year that you serve as the judge of the probate court.
It says right here, uh,
During one year.
Madam Attorney, right here at the beginning, it says uh, annual minimum credit hours of training during any one-year period after the new judge orientation training may be given a six-month administrative extension by the probate judges' training council. Individual requests for extensions beyond the initial six months, extension for reasonable disability hardship, blah blah blah. So everything's based off of six months is what I'm looking at.
Okay.
I read that.
We got a motion and a second, ain't we? Should we go ahead and vote on it? Any more discussion?
Well, I'd give her time to give her opinion.
Well, candidly, I think for the purpose of y'all's vote, um, really that would only be relevant to Ms. Thrift.
Thrift.
Exactly.
Um, and either way, I don't know that that would be the issue here as, I don't, I, I'm not sure, um, if that would be relevant to the issue in, any event, so.
Well, let's vote then.
And also couldn't, alright, just like I said, Thrift takes office in January. If she comes in and at that time say, well, hey, y'all need this other nine thousand dollars, we can make a budget amendment then, right?
Certainly.
Okay.
Just as you already.
Good.
We might give her this one and she come in and say she needs another nine, huh, sir?
We just have to wait and see.
I mean, you know.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
No.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Hendrick?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye, okay. Alright, let's go to the uh, the F, proposed ARPA purchase for airport vehicle, two of them. We really need two of them. I hear a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move, make a motion on the proposed ARPA purchase for airport vehicles. And at this time, I would agree to one instead of two.
Do what?
I would agree to one vehicle instead of two vehicles.
One. I got a motion, I've got a, I got a second.
I just don't see where, I don't see where we need two brand new ones right now.
I don't either.
And there'd be a couple of other things I'd like to talk about too with these vehicles that we're buying out there for the airport. If we can put them up under some kind of keep the heat from beating on them, beating down on them every day, something, maybe a shelter of some kind to put them under. Because that's, that's what's destroying our vehicles. It destroys the paint, destroys the, you know, I mean, it destroys everything.
We got a new, that new building. I have a building we just sold and I don't really understand that myself. Why, why we, why we sold a buil, why, did you know about selling this building?
I didn't know nothing about that.
Tried to get it by then.
I didn't know nothing about it.
Yeah, that, that was whenever he came up and was talking about the building and saying that, you know, if we agreed to.
We were saying that though, that he could still use that building to park stuff under.
Well, no, cause that building got to be moved.
For the new building?
The new building's going over where that slab is.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. I thought they moved that, that would, the new building was in a different location.
No, same place.
Same place. It just, they added on.
They added on to the slab.
And he was saying that, hey, we could sell that building that was there on Gov. Ds.
Nice way to catch the cap back. That solar stuff could have been put in there and all the other fire department stuff is out in the weather.
Okay.
Under discussion, what, which vehicle are you um, wanna buy?
That'd be good, that.
On the hot fire.
Chief's one.
Which one is that?
The Mercedes, let's go with the Mercedes.
Mercedes. I think Mercedes.
I recommend the Chevrolet Equinox.
Chevrolet Equinox.
Sir?
Trax.
I recommend the Chevrolet Equinox if you'll accept it, because that's called, what we just bought.
Yes, sir. That'll be good.
You said just buy one then?
Could I make this recommendation, Commissioner?
What?
Uh, if we don't get a shelter or something like that to park it under, they do have a new type of tent out that I've actually put on my vehicles, it's ceramic tent. And it's according to what kind of percentage of that ceramic tent you get, it actually keeps the heat off the dash and off the front seats and that kind of stuff.
If you got it.
You know, that, and I would recommend also, Scott, I was gonna talk to you about it after, you know, personal before we put it on any kind of agenda. Doing like our, our major vehicles that way, like your vehicle, chief's vehicles, you know, stuff, the sheriff's vehicle. Because that ceramic tent saves the inside of your dash and, I mean, it works wonders. You can literally leave a pack, you can leave a candy bar on your dash at two o'clock in the afternoon and that candy bar will not melt.
It's a tent that goes on the way?
It's a ceramic tent, yes, sir.
Never heard of that.
Nah, you don't wanna show me that.
It's, it's a brand new tent.
Alright, I'll go ahead and tell you.
I'm telling you.
There ain't no way.
I'm telling you.
I'm like, I want you on that.
It was a hundred and ten degrees, my truck sitting in the thing on the outside.
You don't have ceramic tent on it.
No, I'm talking about that was outside temperature.
Yeah, I go along with that.
Okay, just cause that tent's there, plus it, it got some air cool, this flowing in that closed up truck?
No, it's ceramic tent.
Uh, it don't melt it with your air conditioner on?
Huh?
Are you saying it don't melt it when you got your truck running and the air on it?
No, I'm saying you need to put it on your wife's vehicle and let, so let her tell you how well she likes it.
It, a candy bar melted in there.
I go along with you on that same, I, I have to see that, believe that.
It's really good stuff though. I've had several of my vehicles done with it.
Hey, and they'd be putting it on the tiles of the space shuttle if that was the case.
That's where it come from. That's where it come from.
It'd have to be.
Okay, we got a motion for one car, instead of two.
And I, I'll go with Commissioner Pope's recommendation of the Equinox.
Equinox.
Twenty twenty-four Equinox.
I would like to say, ask a question about that now. He said he had six planes there this morning, nine o'clock. So he's only got one vehicle. Plus I reckon he's got to fit into passenger van.
Well, then sometime that's loaned out to other departments.
Yeah, sometimes it is.
Do we have any more used cars? I mean, do we have any more vehicles?
Well, they, they still got that Ford Explorer out there.
Yeah, but you ain't.
They got that Explorer.
You probably don't wanna send somebody down in that Ford Explorer.
I would, I would hope.
That'd be more like, maybe they, that, that's a work vehicle kind of.
Yeah.
Are you amending my motion?
I am. I'm just wanting to know that, if we're gonna have what he needs, you know, because it's a good thing that's going on out there.
I would like, I would like to see it with both of them, really, now.
I'll amend your motion, they can buy two.
Okay. Where, where is?
I say let's go ahead and buy two of them.
Arpa money.
Both of them?
Both of them Equinoxes.
Yeah, I think both of them together will be like.
I think we need to be, we need to be uh, with the same one as the rec department bought both of them.
Alright, you wanna change your motion?
Yeah, I'll change it to, well, let's get two of them, twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Equinox SUVs.
Alright.
Right, two of them.
Two of them.
So we have an amended motion, but we have a second.
I've got a second. Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Hendrick?
Aye.
And a chair vote out there, get two of them. Okay. Alright, proposed Georgia State Patrol post site on Fullford Road.
There may not be action there. It might be that y'all just want to uh, confirm that that's the location, so, so it makes it official, that's all. That way I can move forward on the survey and get the deed done.
Just confirm that, that we're gonna.
I've uh, on our break, Mr. County Manager, I tried to get ahold of the, the post commander. And uh, evidently he was real deep in a vehicle stop, told me he'd get back with me, hadn't got back with me yet, so if we could wait till the next meeting. And uh, I'll get clarification, go back out to the site with him and verify that with him and Jason.
Perfect, get the site, it's okay.
I, I would say the site is okay, but I want the post commander and the assistant commander to be there to show.
You gonna carry, you gonna show it to them?
I'm sure to them, yes.
Alright.
And I'll have that done before our next meeting.
We're just gonna table it then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that a motion to table? A motion to table by Ms. Lucas?
Make a motion to table this until I can get clarification from the GSP.
I'll second.
Got a second. Got a motion to table it and a second. Alright, let's vote. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Hendrick?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Okay.
Chairman, I'm late in order, sorry for me to ride out there with Commissioner Lucas, I mean, back alone.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll come, I'll come pick you up in that Mercedes.
Okay, H, Ware County zoning text amendment, article six, section six sixteen.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion.
Y'all know what that was about?
Yes, sir, he read it to us. I, I believe it's needed and uh, I believe I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt the new Ware County zoning text amendment as read. And that Mr. Chief Schubert explained in detail, article six, section six, one six.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it?
I just appreciate them making the effort, bringing this forth to
Nobody.
Make our community as a whole look better in the long run. I believe it's gonna be a big thing and a big help to the community. And it's not, you know, some, it's gonna dress up some of these, what they signify as trailer parks.
And I, I would like for y'all to kinda, if it's a side door going into a laundry room, that's not a front door, you know? I would like not, not to see that because they're gonna exploit that if we don't. You know, they're gonna, I mean, they, they will.
Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? I'll let them vote on it.
Get a second.
Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Hendrick?
Aye.
Chair vote out there, okay.
Was that a second?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, he made the second. Okay, Commissioner's comments.
I don't.
Mr.
Got any?
I'd just like to say that I had the, the state privilege and honor having Mr. Timmy Lucas as one of my classmates on a Zoom class last week. He represented himself and this county well. So I'm just privileged and honored just to be in his presence on that Zoom class.
What kind of class was it?
Conflict resolution.
Wait, wait, was he teaching?
No, no, he was, he was my classmate.
Oh, I thought you said he was the teacher.
I taught, I taught most of it.
I thought you said.
I did.
Let me retract that. He did, he was a student, but he was a student slash takeover teacher also.
Takeover teacher. So he wasn't a coach study, y'all was studying?
No.
I actually taught more than the instructor did.
But it was, it was a good class, you know?
I think we'd have got out about forty-five minutes earlier if I'd have zipped up. Yeah, kinda like that, yeah, Melinda, you're right.
Timmy hadn't graded?
No, he hadn't graded, yeah. He did, he did good in all, in all shifts.
I had a, I had the instructor thinking, now he had to think, didn't he?
Yeah, and I didn't know he was even gonna be on, in that class, you know? When they first heard drum roll and everything, I said, where's that coming?
Put, put me and him in some more, that way he can learn a little bit more of.
Alright.
I do have one thing to mention, Chairman. Uh, I think we went a couple of meetings now, couple uh, that we still haven't talked about the rec commission, the rec board.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I know several of us has been contacted numerous times. I've been contacted numerous times.
Yeah.
And um, been asked several times when we were going to move forward with it because they don't know what to do. They don't know if they're ready to start, if we're gonna allow them to start.
I thought they had to start, they start at the end of this term. Thought that's when we were gonna.
Have we done a point at all of them?
Yeah.
I believe it's, we have.
I'll tell some names.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we had the names and I've, uh, Mitch Scott, he was gonna try and set up a time to get with Jennifer to look over some of those, the bylaws.
Some changes.
And then we just do it all, you know, pretty much at one time.
Do it all at one time? Okay, alright. But I've had numerous calls and I just told them I'd mention it, so I mentioned it and I'll go back to them with a response. We'll get the bylaws fixed and
Okay.
Just try to get it all done.
Did we, did we ever get any process on the, um, fixing the fixing the buildings, the roofs and stuff like that, the rotten stuff out there for the wreck?
No, that was one of the things Brandon was working on. I don't know how far he got with it, so I've got to see if I can find that file. But he had uh, gotten two proposals on doing the, the replacing the rotten wood and stuff on those buildings.
I, I think they, they, they have.
We probably, the thing is, is now that we've, if we use that money out of ARPA, we'll have to wait on splotch for it to come in to be able to have money to do that with. But I'm gonna have to find that file. I don't know where, where they, where he's putting.
So what we're saying is the only money that we have, anything that comes from splotch, anything that comes from these grants. So what we're saying is the only money that we have, anything that comes from SPOSS, anything that comes from these grants. And that's all the money this county has due, any to work with?
Pretty much, yeah. That, that, that money, SPOSS money, uh, is typically for capital equipment or capital projects. Um, only because you try to remove those out of your general fund, uh, to keep the general fund as low as you can for property tax reasons. Use the SPOSS money, special purpose money, to do those kind of capital equipment repairs.
Is our, like our reserves, is it going up? Are we? Or does it stay at a set price?
Oh, the reserve, they fluctuate based on, you know, what's used from the previous year. Um, but we have over the period of years added to the fund balance, what, what it's called. And we save that, that's what we've invested, you know, with the, uh, money market that we put the money in.
That's right, that's, and that's what I was gonna say there. We're making, well, we saved what, what y'all saying was like, uh, two, two, like two hundred thousand dollars a month? Just swapping over there?
Yeah.
And then we're making what, seventies?
Right.
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, and the SPOSS we're earning almost eight hundred thousand.
That's pretty good bit of money, two hundred thousand a month.
Yeah, yeah. And it could grow over.
Where does that, that, that money staying in the SPOSS or?
Yeah, it stays there, uh-huh. And we're having to save the beginning part of that for a few months to, for the.
For the bridge.
And then after that, we'll start splitting it sixty to forty with the city.
That sounds good.
Yes.
But I think, uh, Sam and, uh, we got some, a bid, I believe, on that, a trimming earth, didn't we get a bid on that? Roughly what it would cost to do it, that work that we wanted to have done out there?
I know we did on the net.
At the recreation apartment.
That's what Brandon was working on. Um, you talking about for repairing the buildings where?
Yes, all the rotten wood and stuff.
I'll have to check and see where that was, what he was working on.
We had to, didn't we go with a company for the netting? Did we go with?
Yeah, that's been installed.
That's been done, been done. Good, good, good.
Yeah.
And the other thing I'd like to bring up too, since we're talking about the rec center, is there have been several, um. That's what I'm looking for here, be politically correct here. Things that they've had softball, football matches, softball matches, those kind of things that they've done for decades out there. That they, they do it in honor of certain people and it's, you know, certain people's names. Am I making sense with that? But the rec, the, the rec director now, for some reason, this past year, I, I received like twelve, fourteen phone calls from coaches. Because this particular midget football game that they've had every year for like twenty-seven years, all of a sudden this past year, they didn't have it this past summer. And I hurt a bunch of people's feelings, a bunch of coaches' feelings and stuff like that.
Was it like a memorial game?
It's a memorial game, yeah, but it was named after an old coach that was in Ware County for years. What was it?
Mickey Katkewak's what you're thinking of. Yeah, that's, that's what used to be called the, uh.
It was a midget football.
The Midget Bowl.
Right.
Right.
But the last one wasn't held because there was other tournaments going on and staff wasn't available. Um, I know there was a big conflict, whatever. Something that was canceled and got rescheduled or something, but that was why. But typically it's done every year.
I would like to make sure that it's brought back, you know, and, and that's why I'm real interested in this board and getting this board up and running so they can get this thing back on good shape.
I think what Scott said was, what I heard too was that it's not that directly, just arbitrarily just say, well, I'm just not gonna have it, or anything. But it was other extenuating circumstances that.
That just never got rescued.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's what it was.
So you gonna take care of that rec board then, you gonna tell them?
I'll, I'll call Mr. Teresa back and, uh, let them know what she's listening to right now anyway.
Yeah, you recall who the people that we are, are pointing on there, but I know we had the names.
I think we've got it listed. I don't.
Okay.
Mike Big Ten.
Ramona, Mike Big Ten, Ms. Arnold, Teresa Arnold, Ms. Gibson, uh.
Davis Dale.
Davis Dale.
I think Carlos Nelson, he was on that too, wasn't he?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
And Sam Hendrick.
And Sam Hendrick, yeah.
Okay.
So we got all the names, yeah, we just, they're just looking for some guidance, you know, which direction to go.
They're still having their routinely meetings today, or?
No, they haven't started anything.
Yeah, we haven't started meeting yet because.
They're waiting months to.
Bylaws that.
So nothing, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, I'll send, with, there was some changes, some modifications to the bylaws and I'll send those out. They were, they were reviewed before, I think, the only one I got back that made, maybe it was Commissioner Pope, I can't remember, but. But I'll send them out to you and let y'all look at them, 'cause they would need to be modified based on the new, the situation. Because the, the way the bylaws were drip, uh, drafted the first time, maybe even second time, years and years and years ago. Um, it gave a tremendous amount of power to the advisory board. They could hire fire staff, the whole works, and that caused a lot of issues and problems and, and it was spoken, but they wanted to change it way back when, right when I started back with Ware County. And it was always an issue, then it kinda dissolved for that reason, but, uh, but I'll send it.
They should be doing hiring and firing.
My thing, yeah. Rationality too was also was that whenever the board comes on, that they were, we had the bylaws in place so everybody, instead of the. By, the committee being there and then the bylaws coming in behind them.
That's right.
Need to know when they come, it's just the way it is.
I agree a hundred percent on something.
I'd like to say one thing about the, uh. Traffic in Wareville. We had a wreck the other day. Stopped the bridge for over two hours and then had trains on track. I mean, you know, it's.
Train, train was on track because it hit a log truck.
Yeah, and then had, had a log truck. And then there was a wreck on top of the bridge.
This is diff, this was different. Now, that log truck just happened day before yesterday, but that brick, wreck on top of that bridge.
You know about the bridge?
And then it was trained, you know, that was under there, but what I'm saying, that was, but that one other day just happened, I think, Saturday, I believe.
Yeah, it's hard, this whole town gets locked down.
Yeah.
On campus.
I mean, they had them on Plant Avenue, they had them, 'cause when, when that one goes up underneath, Quarter Z there. I mean, it locks down. Albany, it locks down.
Yep.
Carlington, I mean.
The one on, the one on the overpass that you're talking about, the Carlsons were blocked.
Yeah.
'Cause I had, that, it pushed me around to go to that way and that's when I noticed the wreck at the top of the, uh, overpass.
Where, where, what's the status on Albany Avenue if it?
Uh, I'm, I'm, had a meeting last Friday with the, uh, the designers and the attorney on the, on the parcels there. And they're gonna, they're gonna nail down a better cost estimate to find out if we move forward with purchasing the total properties, all the properties. Uh, or we just can get by with parts of them. And, uh, they're gonna get back with me for the end of this week. And because I sent them with the new assessments that's come out, I sent them that information to look at that and see what, how the numbers come out. Because the, the retaining walls were pushing four million dollars and we thought that we could probably purchase the property for less than that. Just so we could save the money and time. Um, so they're supposed to let me know at the end of the week what they've come up with.
We'll have to, if we don't put the walls just over bridge, we'll, we'll still have to buy that property?
Uh, yes, sir. Only because you're gonna, you're basically gonna have the slopes coming out.
To make it stronger.
Right, and so if you, if you buy the property, it's probably gonna be cheaper than, 'cause building the walls, the retaining walls are much more expensive.
We'll just give the deputies more work to do with people sleeping late.
Well, you just gonna have to, you know?
Or either put.
Tonight, go and be up there weeding and, uh.
I thought you, you brought up a good idea where you go in there and put a.
Leave it open, none of it, plenty.
Put a, put a gate in there.
Ain't nothing.
And park equipment in there.
Park trucks on them.
And put up a gate.
I don't feel right, don't leave it up.
And park trucks.
Both, both sides of it.
What I thought.
Yeah.
Right, Mr. Schubert, that is saying it back there.
I was gonna say the other day that the other way to get to Jamesstown or Lake Huron area from Northside was to go through. Town of Angels, that's how they built that bridge across Cup Creek, because there was three trains on the track. And it had everything locked down from Nick, I know at least from Nichols, all the way to, uh, well.
Absolutely. The whole thing was locked down.
And you know, we're talking about it blocked, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm railroad, that's where I made my livelihood and all, but it's still a problem. But the main thing is that when you get all of them trained, blocking everything, you have an emergency. Fire, somebody need, uh, ambulance, you know, for help, that's, that's my biggest fear, that they can't even get to the person. And it could be one of our family members.
That's all.
Yeah, they do.
They keep on, like they did that day in the past.
The, the railroad is a viable part of our community. I mean, they really are. They're needed, good jobs.
Yeah, but.
I mean.
Wish they'd help out a little more with.
Look, look, I mean, look, look what, you know, Mr. Burst down here is a mega multi-ten down there, you know?
Boy, I tell you, so you're piling on deep now.
Did you, uh, Timmy, did you explain?
Which one?
At the tax meeting the other day, you explained how it all was going?
It went, well, it did, those of us that were there, I think all of us left with a, with a headache, 'cause they wasn't, nobody wanted to listen to our tax commissioner. And, uh, tax commissioner pretty well told them that all the assessments that went out were wrong. And then they started, we had a couple people stand up, started advocate for dirt roads, needed to be paved and this needed to be done, that needed to be done, and they had to be told, we're not here for that, and then they got upset.
You say he told them that assessments were not?
They were, they were incorrect. The assessments were incorrect.
Yeah, they give it extensions, they're right.
For example, they said, and I thought, and I'm paraphrasing here now, but they said that the businesses on Memorial Drive, like Prime South Bank and several others. They went up a minimum, help me out here, Scott, if this, and what they said, they said they went up a minimum of two point five million dollars per parcel. And when big Mr. Billy called that, that's the, the company that done our work for us, that's what they did. And, you know, remember when he said they were using those iPads and those iPads would download automatically once they inputted the information? But I know Prime South execs were there, uh, several other execs on businesses that are down Memorial Drive, Walmart execs were there. But every one of those businesses, every single one of them, two point five million, just like that went up. And Mr. Billy called and he's like, no way, this ain't correct. And then they started looking at some housing that touched those certain areas. And that's when Roger got up there and told them that those assessments are wrong.
So Billy did say that the company made a mistake on it?
Yes, he did. But Billy didn't go. Billy didn't go, Roger went. Mr. Two, Mr. Collins, tax commissioner went. Me and Scott were there.
But he said that Billy did say that it was.
That they were wrong, that was theirs.
Yeah, he said it was wrong.
Well, I sure wish they would've sent out a letter before they sent out that thing. If they'd have sent that letter out a month before, like we were talking about. It should've been a lot better off, so people would've got ready for it. So, and it hit all the people like a sack of bricks.
And they come out in droves. I mean, there was standing room only in there.
Well, they went up, uh, one, uh, almost a billion dollars on the racetrack. Ain't nothing but grandstands dirt and that's a good piece of land right there in town. They went up one point two, I believe, on the fairgrounds.
There was a lot of, lot of parcels off.
It changed, but I saw their assessment, it went up from eight hundred thousand to over two million dollars.
Yeah, that two point, what, at two point two or something now?
Yeah, he said, Mr. Billy said that those are absolutely wrong.
So now they got.
I just wish we wouldn't have sent out fault, sent out fault stuff because we got a lot of.
Got a lot of mad citizens out there right now, city and county.
But he says taxes ain't gonna go up, I don't know. Hmm? He says taxes wasn't going up any.
That's what Roger said. The taxes wasn't moving.
Okay.
We're gonna put it on Roger.
We ready?
Any more?
I'll make a. Make a, make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, did you? All in favor?
Meeting adjourned.
I'm out of here.